And with every bite he fed her, he asked her, "How do you feel?" They spoke of art and music and the books they both had read. Then she realized with a start she'd lost all her fear and dread. They laughed and talked for hours until the wine was almost gone. Tell me how to touch you. And he waited until she would say. He promised not to do one thing unless she said, "Okay." But now she was confused.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of September 13th, 2016, to order. If you could please join me on with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Hotchkiss not present. Mayor Breitam White not present. Mayor Schneider?
Here.
Councilmember Rouse?
Here.
Councilmember Hart?
Here.
And Councilmember Maria?
Here.
Item one, proclamation declaring September 2016 Village Properties 20th anniversary.
Come on up. Welcome. You've got a big crowd here for you. Village Properties was co-founded by Ed Edek and Renee Grubb in 1996. And Village Properties has grown to become the region's largest independent real estate brokerage with over 150 agents and brokers and offices throughout Santa Barbara County. And Village Properties remains dedicated to providing exceptional comprehensive services to clients and integrating extensive knowledge of all aspects of the Santa Barbara real estate market. And Village Properties is committed to giving back to the Santa Barbara community through the establishment of the nonprofit Teachers Fund in 2002, which to date has raised more than $1.5 million to assist over 2,600 local teachers with needed supplies, materials, and equipment. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby congratulate founders Ed Edek and Renee Grubb on the 20-year anniversary of Village Properties. On behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council, we wish you continued success for many years to come. Thank you for all you do in our community. Well, thank you, first of all, for this honor. We really, really appreciate it, and it's nice to have such a crowd. We are extremely proud of the fact that we dove right into giving back to our community, which was a very important thing for us to do. And we continue to do it. We love Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Ed Edek, thank you all for all your help. I've known all of you for a long time. I see a number of our customers in the crowd. Thank you for supporting us and helping us support the schools. And we look to do this for many more years to come. Thank you very much.
Item two, proclamation honoring Santa Barbara Foresters.
Bring that trophy on up here. Woo-hoo. Look at that. That looks good right there. All right. The Santa Barbara Foresters won the 2016 National Baseball Congress NBC World Series with a perfect 6-0 record, playing in Dodger Stadium for the first time, and won the California Collegiate League for the 19th time undefeated. And in 2016 marks the Foresters' sixth NBC championships, following championships in 2006, 2008, 2011, 2012, and 2014, tying an all-time record for the 82-year-old event in Wichita, Kansas. And Bill Pintard, who will notch his 900th career win as the Foresters manager in 2017, was named the NBC Manager of the Year for the fifth time. And third baseman Brett Boswell was the first Foresters player to be named the National Summer Ball Player of the Year in addition to being named CCL's Most Valuable Player, the CCL's Playoff MVP, and leading the NBC World Series with 14 RBIs. And the Foresters are committed to performing community service visiting Cottage Hospital and Villa Christie Hospital with the Hugs for Cubs program for young cancer patients and their families. And the Foresters have displayed a consistent standard of excellence, enhancing the image of Santa Barbara nationally through their notable achievements and good deeds on and off the baseball diamond. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby congratulate the Santa Barbara Foresters on their multitude of notable achievements and commend them for representing their Santa Barbara with professionalism, positivity, and integrity. And congratulations.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you so very much. I want to introduce our President of our Board of Directors, Christina Songer, who has been accused of trying to hurt cats because she has a bunch of baseball guys. But she sure gets it done, and we're very fortunate to have her on our board. And this is really her trophy, too. This year was kind of trying for us. We don't know where we're playing next year. But we were so proud to wear Santa Barbara Foresters on our chests back in Wichita, Kansas. We were so proud to be able to watch the ballgame. It was on ESPN and watched the tape of it. And for them to say Santa Barbara Foresters was just a moment of pride for us. Our players, the reason this year was so thrilling for me, we had a group of young men that were so giving and so unselfish and so team-oriented that it was a pleasure to go coach them. And so I just want to thank the city of Santa Barbara for your support. I want to thank all our fans for coming today. We'll see you at East Beach Grill for breakfast tomorrow. And thank you very much. I'm going to, we're going to leave this trophy for you for good luck and all your decisions you're going to make. We'll be back in a while to get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you realize some of their games, they played at 4:00 in the morning, and they had to continue playing after they won that evening to win the title. So, yeah, that was, that's early. Okay, or late, I don't know, something. Congratulations. All right. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'd like to not have the closed session. Item 17, subject conference with city attorney anticipated litigation. We have some more work to do on that. We'll bring it back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so we will not have the closed session. And then, public comment. I have a couple of minutes here at the podium. We have a couple of speaker slips. We'll start with Lee Muldaver to be followed by Brian Stevenson.
Yeah, that's one heck of a great trophy. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Lee Muldaver. I'm taking off my hat, but I'm wearing two hats today. One, as a former chairman of the City Transportation and Circulation Committee. Item nine on your consent calendar is a 15-plus-year-old dream come true. So thank you for making that happen before Greg's boss, Jim Kemp, retires. I thought it would never happen. But as the Director of the Coastal Resource Center, I want to remind everyone here and everyone who's watching that this Friday is the launch of Santa Barbara County's Annual Creek Week with a scavenger hunt. And there's going to be activities for the next eight days. And this coming Saturday is Coastal Cleanup Day. And we have people all over the city of Santa Barbara and the South Coast who are going to be cleaning up the creeks where they emptied the ocean and the beaches along the shore. It's incredibly exciting. And any of you who are here in the room or not already locked into one of these activities, there's an amazing woman on your payroll who reports to Mr. Casey. Her name is Liz Smith, and she's the coordinator for all of the city of Santa Barbara's Creek Week Educational and Recreation activities. And if you want to find out more, and you don't have time to go online to the site, which is easy, you can reach Liz at 897-2606. So thank you again for a great Creek Week, Coastal Cleanup Day. And as you can see from my Cal Trow t-shirt, it's also California Sport Fishing and Steelhead Recovery Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Stevenson, and then Mr. Ketchian, were you here for public comment or item 16? Because you have both on 16, so I'll put that on for when that comes up. Okay, Brian Stevenson will be the final public comment speaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and the members of council. And thank you so much for this opportunity. Now, what I want to educate people about is the whole historic drought, it's nothing with climate change. It's, climate change is a complete hoax. And I got that with my laptop.
It's going to bring rain to California. And instead, they did a harp downburst on the north side of it, which clockwise flow around the high, pressed it downward. It literally disappeared until it had--
And this is why we have the chemtrails the way they are.
--reconstitutes itself over New Mexico. And this low pressure brought me an inch and a half of rain. And this may be sort of a proxy. They figure, well, let's give this guy his rain, and he won't make any more videos. And that's kind of how I feel about it. You folks in California are the ones who should be doing this homework, documenting this manipulation of the jet stream. Okay, now I want to show you here. Let me play this. Now here we have another low pressure trying to build, and then they do a bunch of heavy chemtrailing out here. So don't think for a minute that this drought in California is natural. They're using a variety of techniques to maintain this drought. Let me show you. Now, now we're getting somewhere. Oh, come on. This is getting long, but this is some really good and rare stuff I'm about to show you. So we have this odd bit of extremely dry air showing--
So we know about the whole weather system, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes public comment. You move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item three, adoption of ordinance approving supervisor's memorandum of understanding. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending 2012 to 2016 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara City Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit, adopted by ordinance number 5587 and previously amended by ordinance numbers 5623 and 5704, and extending the term through June 30th, 2017. Item four, adoption of ordinance granting easements to County Flood Control District as part of the Mason Street Bridge replacement. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving the granting of easements on city-owned properties to the County of Santa Barbara Flood Control and Water Conservation District for flood control and all related purposes, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the grant deeds in a form approved by the city attorney. Item five, adoption of ordinance establishing speed limits. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.60 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by revising Section 10.60.015 and establishing prima facie speed limits on certain portions of Anacapa Street, De La Vina Street, La Colina Road, Loma Alta Road, Verano Drive, and Yanone Valley Street. Item six, adoption of ordinance amending municipal code provisions pertaining to harbor slip assignments. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by amending Section 17.20.005 of Chapter 17.20 of Title 17 pertaining to harbor slip assignments. Item seven, adoption of ordinance adopting Police Officers Association memorandum of understanding. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019. And that's it.
Without further adjection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Rouse, you needed to pull an item.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I need to pull item six. I am, in fact, a slip holder, so I need to abstain.
Okay, so if we can have a motion for item six?
Move item six, Madam Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Maria, second by White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No opposition, and one abstention by Rouse. Okay, any other, anyone else need to pull anything off the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the balance?
Move the rest.
Moved by White, second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Hart?
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee met and considered the fourth quarter financial review, which is also on our agenda. I think we just passed it as part of the consent calendar.
It's next.
It's next, okay, so we'll talk about that then. And in addition to that, we had another of our many conversations about infrastructure needs. We had a unanimous vote of the commission, or the committee, to forward the item to the full council for discussion later this fall to consider a range of potential revenue increase measures and a number of specific recommendations as a way to bring out some additional funding for road maintenance in the near term.
Great, look forward to that. Okay, item number 14.
Item 14, fiscal year 2016 fourth quarter review.
All right, thank you. Hello, Ms. Neams, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I am Julie Neamis, Treasury Manager for the Finance Department. I'm here with Jennifer Tomaszewski. She is the accounting manager. We are here today to present the fourth quarter financial review for fiscal year 2016. We did just present this report in detail at Finance Committee, so we'll be brief today. In your agenda packet attached to the report, you'll see several pages of budget adjustments. We will not be going through those today, but we can answer any questions you may have. I also wanted to point out that these are preliminary results, so we did not prepare the general fund reserves for you today. However, we will be coming back in about one month to go over the summary of results and the general fund reserve balances. So there are three areas that we'll be covering today. I will be presenting the general fund revenues. Ms. Tomaszewski will be going over general fund expenditures and the enterprise funds. And we will not be covering the proposed budget adjustments unless you have any questions. So first of all, the general fund revenues. This is a summary of all general fund revenues for fiscal year 2016. As I mentioned, it is a preliminary results. So final results were prepared and presented to you at the end of the calendar year with the comprehensive annual financial report. I also wanted to point out, we have one change from what was presented in your agenda packet. On Friday, we received the fourth quarter sales tax results. So I did update that in the chart on the first row under taxes. You'll notice that number has changed. So this is a more up-to-date number. In total, general fund revenues came in under budget by about $2 million, the majority of that being under taxes. And I'll be going through details on each of these categories in the next few slides. For general fund tax revenues, as I mentioned, this was the majority of where we came in under budget for the city, $1.8 million below budget. A large portion of that was with sales and use tax, even with the fourth quarter coming in. There are a lot of different factors that impact sales and use tax, things such as changing gas prices, inflation, the strength of the dollar compared to other currencies, and how that affects tourism. So some of these factors did impact sales and use tax for the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 2016. And it did cause sales and use tax to be below budget by $1.4 million. The one general fund tax revenue that performed better, much better than anticipated, was property tax revenues. The assessed values were about over 6% higher per county records, resulting in property tax revenues exceeding budget by $640,000. The last variance I'd like to discuss are TOT revenues, transient occupancy taxes. A lot of the same factors that impact sales and use taxes impact TOT revenues. Not all the same factors, but many of the same ones. So we did see, it's not uncommon to see when there's a reduction in sales and use tax revenues compared to budget that we'll see a similar impact to TOT. So TOT came in about $1 million below budget. Moving on to general fund other revenues. In total, general fund other revenues came in just under budget by about $200,000. There are two main variances. Fines and forfeiture came in about $660,000 below budget. This is largely due to parking citation revenues. During the fiscal year, the police department entered into a new agreement for parking citation processing with a new vendor. This new vendor provides more timely notifications, which allows customers to pay more on time, resulting in lower fines and penalties revenues for late payments. The next revenue I'd like to discuss is intergovernmental. This did come in about $900,000 above budget. This is almost entirely due to mutual aid reimbursements for the fire department. The next area I'd like to cover are fees and service charges. This area did come in slightly above budget by about $27,000. There are two main areas I'd like to cover. Community development fees and service charges. Over the year, we've been seeing community development perform better than anticipated. This is almost entirely due to development activity fees. This is such things as development permits, building permits. The next one are public work revenues. Public works revenues came in slightly below budget by $512,000. This is largely due to engineering work order coming in below, engineering work order revenue coming in below budget, largely due to staff vacancies. But I did want to point out that this is offset by expenditure savings in salaries. The last area I'd like to focus on is miscellaneous revenues. In total, miscellaneous revenues has come in under budget by about $50,000, entirely due to operating transfers in. This variance of $137,000 is largely due to transfers in from the Traffic Safety Fund for moving traffic citations. Our, the city's uniformed officers, they issue these moving traffic citations, which are then levied by the county. Due to some vacancies in this area, in the traffic positions, it has resulted in less citations being issued, which results in less revenues being received by the county. And that is my general fund revenue analysis and review. So I'd be happy to answer any questions before I pass it on to Ms. Tomaszewski.
Any questions? I would first just ask if we could not block the door in and out of council. So there's some seats available up here. Also, Room 15 is open and the doors open. But please do not block the entrance. Thank you. I don't see any questions, so please continue. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jennifer Tomaszewski, and I am the accounting manager for the Finance Department. And I will be presenting the general fund expenditures as well as the enterprise funds revenues and expenditures. The first slide, the first slide we're looking at is the general fund expenditures broken down by department. And the second column is the annual, the adjusted annual budget. This is, this includes, this includes the adopted budget as well as appropriation carryforwards from the prior year and supplemental appropriations approved by council throughout the year. And in total, the general fund budget is $126.8 million compared to actual preliminary expenditures of about $119 million. The highlighted column is the variance. It's basically the difference between the budget and actual. And what this shows is about a $7.8 million savings at year-end. If you adjust that for encumbrances, the results for year-end are about a $6.6 million savings. Now, the overall variance of 6.6 million, the main driver for this is across-the-board vacancy, savings in salaries from vacancies. As you can see, police, public works, parks and rec, parks and recreation, library, community development, almost all of those savings are due to salary savings. Fire is the one department that was over-budget on appropriations over by $715,000. This is due to mutual aid activities. And typically, they budget based on historical trends. We know this was a high fire season. The majority of that is overtime, which was more than compensated for on the revenue side. I think mutual aid activities came in about $1.6 million on the revenues received to offset the overage in the expenditures. I'm going to move to the enterprise funds. And again, these are explained in much more detail in the agenda packets. So we're just going to touch on some of the highlights. And again, similar format to the last slide. The annual budget is adopted budget, carryforwards, and budget adjustments throughout the year compared to actual. And we will be looking at the variances. The first, the first fund I will discuss is the water fund. Revenues pretty much are right at budgeted amounts, so my focus will be on the $5 million savings. This, this was as a result of several factors. Salary savings, again, being one of the main drivers here as well. There was $1 million in savings from water purchases as a result of prior year credits from Central Coast Water Authority and Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board. And another main driver for that is $1.6 million in savings for services and supplies. About a million of that was savings from chemical and waste disposal costs for the Ortega groundwater treatment plant. Staff did not have to change out the water filter media as planned, which resulted in a large savings. Waste water is very similar to water, whereas the revenues came in right at budgeted levels. And the expenditures were down about $2.3 million. If you adjust for encumbrances at year-end, that savings resulted in about a $1.4 million savings. And also similar to the water fund, that savings is really a result of several factors, again, being salary savings, materials and supplies. Staff received better pricing on chemicals. And with the hot, with the hot weather, less rain, and the use of a lighter polymer, there was less waste, which reduced the hauling costs. And in addition, there was a budgeted principal payment for the fog loan, which that project was delayed. So there was not, they were not required to make that principal payment. And the 2004 sewer bond payments, a part of that payment was offset by dividends earned on the bond reserve. I'm now going to talk about the airport. The airport ended the year with reduced revenues by about $413,000. And this, again, is spread over several revenue items that just across the board were slightly below budget. One of the main drivers being commercial and industrial properties. There were building vacancies. There was sale of property on Hollister Avenue. And the budget was slightly overstated for the High Sierra Grill. There were some other contributing revenues, but those were the main drivers for the revenues below budget. On the expenditure side, revenues, I'm sorry, on the expenditure side, expenditures came in about $1.2 million below budget. When you adjust for the encumbrances, about half a million. The savings resulted in about $770,000. And the main, the main driver for this was, again, salary savings. Lastly, I'd like to discuss the waterfront fund. And the waterfront ended the year with a surplus of revenues of about $1.3 million. And overall waterfront revenues are driven by weather and economic conditions. And as you are aware, this is the fifth year of this upward trend in revenues. The main drivers for this were property management revenues, slip transfer fees, and cruise ship revenues. And with the surplus, the waterfront was able to pay off the remaining outstanding general fund loan. general fund loan. I should mention, on the expenditure side, the $640,000 savings on the expenditure side, a portion of that was savings from the debt service, that they were able to pay off the, the loans early, so they didn't have the principal payments. And then the remainder was, again, salary savings. So just to recap, staff recommend that council accept the interim financial statements for fiscal year into June 30, 2016, and approve the proposed budget adjustments. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips, okay, for this item. Mr. Hart?
I just wanted to congratulate City Administrator, Mr. Casey, on his strategy of pausing the filling of vacancies. That's clearly the, the situation where we have significant savings on the expenditure side is a direct result of that strategy. And if it weren't for doing that and instituting that across the citywide with all the departments, the $2 million in lost revenue that we had this year would have been a very significant issue, particularly, not even so particularly this fiscal year, but the following two fiscal years, where we are absolutely going to need this savings in order to balance the budget looking forward. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you for that advice.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we accept this report and approve the proposed adjustments.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mario, second by Hart. Any other questions? Okay, we look forward to the final numbers and see what the bottom line will look like. Can you say in about a month or so? Great. All right. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item number 15.
Item 15, conceptual design contract for the restoration of the Andre Clark Bird Refuge.
Great. As Mr. Benson gets together, I, I have to admit, I misread the yellow and white signs. I thought it said, "Give egg a chance," and I thought it had to do with the smell at the bird refuge. I thought you wanted the smell. But this might be some teachable moments about what's going on in that part of the world. But anyway, Mr. Benson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Cameron Benson. I'm the Creeks Division Manager. And I am here today to present some options for restoration program for the Andre Clark Bird Refuge. As you know, the, the Bird Refuge is a 29-acre lake within a 42-acre open space on the eastern end of Santa Barbara. This is a GIS map, so it's not really that color right now, but it, it may be that color sometimes. And it's, this map also outlines the watershed. It's about an 820-acre watershed area that encompasses that general area. The historic conditions at the Bird Refuge, many people may not know this. The, the Bird Refuge was once connected to Sycamore Creek, and there was a little coastal lagoon that came across the beach here and back to the Bird Refuge. That lagoon would open to the ocean sometimes, so you'd have a tidal influence on the, on the Bird Refuge. It's a shallow salt marsh, and so you can see in this photo, a portion of the, of the Bird Refuge is dry, and then another portion is wet. And then there used to be a pretty significant dune habitat on the beach side. This is an aerial photo taken in the late 1920s, or mid, mid 1920s. Just to orient you, the Child's Estate or the zoo here, and the Clark Estate over here. As you can see, this is, Sycamore Creek used to come down and around across the beach and into the, into the Bird Refuge. In the late 1920s, in the attempt to, to keep water in the Bird Refuge permanently, a weir or a dam was installed at that opening. The Bird Refuge was dredged out at that time to make it, to make it deeper. The effect of having the weir in place was, it prevented water from leaving, it prevented the Bird Refuge from being able to flush out to the ocean. At that time, Sycamore Creek was also straightened, and this coastal lagoon was filled with sand, or filled itself with sand. This is, is a side-by-side aerial sort of before and after the weir was put in place. As you can see, we, we just saw the photo over, what the photo was over here. Now it's filled with water. You see the three islands. That was the dredge spoils, and that's where, the way they got rid of the dredge material, created those islands. But then you can see it's filled with water. With regard to the odor at the Bird Refuge, this is nothing new. This is a quote from minutes from the Board of Park Commissioners back in 1933, just a short time after the weir was installed. This is a quote from one of the commissioners, just talking about work that had been done to eliminate the odor existing at the Bird Refuge. This has been a problem for 80-plus years at the Bird Refuge. The existing conditions of the Bird Refuge are, we have a really shallow lake. It's two to, two to five feet, average about three feet deep throughout. Very limited flushing. Those are sort of the unique characteristics of the Bird Refuge compared to other small-size or medium-sized ponds in Southern California. We have high nutrient levels, low dissolved oxygen, periodic odor events, and they range in their severity, and marginalized bird and aquatic habitat. The city, over, over the last several decades, has done numerous studies and reports in trying to, trying to identify opportunities to improve the situation at the Bird Refuge. Parks and Recreation staff have reviewed all of the reports in coming to you today, so that we had the whole range of solutions before us. We weren't doing anything to kind of reinvent the wheel. Our goals with, with a project at the Bird Refuge are to decrease those odor events, to improve our water quality, improve the bird and aquatic habitat, improve aesthetics, while maintaining flood protection, and also in a cost-effective approach. Another thing, because the Bird Refuge is a, a sensitive wetland area in the coastal zone, there is extensive and difficult and time-consuming permitting process for any project the city decides to do there. There are state agencies we need permits from, like the Coastal Commission, the Regional Water Board, and Department of Fish and Wildlife. Federal agencies, NOAA, Corps of Engineers, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And then we have city, a city permitting process and city design review processes as well. Generally speaking, there, there are about six different approaches that can be taken to address the issues we have at the Bird Refuge. And those include dredging and filling, flushing, probiotics, adding supplemental water, and hydraulic restoration. The Creeks Division staff took a set of alternatives to the council's Sustainability Committee in June, with different variations of all six of those options included in them. And staff was directed by the committee to come forward with a scope of work on three of the alternatives. And I'm going to go through those three right now. One is sort of a no-action alternative, or a status quo. And that's really just to give us a baseline of what are we comparing the alternatives to. There'd be no physical changes, so we would maintain the weir in place there. We'd expect that we would continue to have poor water quality and degraded habitat. And also, we have sediment deposition coming from upstream in the watershed. And we would estimate that over a period of approximately 100 years, the Bird Refuge would fill with sediment. The second alternative would be to remove that weir and try to restore, or at least increase the flushing of the nutrients and the water in the Bird Refuge. We would, whoops, excuse me. Missing some of the, part of the photo here. We would restore dune habitat down in this, in this location. Purpose for that was, is to provide some habitat improvement, but also to protect the volleyball courts from additional water coming out of the Bird Refuge here, from flooding the volleyball courts. By, by removing that weir, we may have periods of, of low water, or even no water, in portions of the Bird Refuge during different parts of the year, depending on how the storms come and the tidal influence. And we would have continued sediment deposition with that alternative. Third alternative would remove the, remove the weir. We'd restore the dune habitat in that same location down here. We would, if we could permit it, mechanically open the ocean outfall at regular intervals to allow the flushing to occur. And we would do some dredging and filling in portions of the lake area. The dredging to deepen portions of it, filling to, around the margins to improve wildlife habitat, and also potentially allow for a trail extension around the western side of the Bird Refuge, and have a, have an increased recreational opportunity with a loop trail all the way around. By filling portions of, of the, of the lake, we'd also reduce the surface area and slow evaporation and heating of the water. We're here today to, to ask the council to enter into a, an agreement with an engineering consultant. We're recommending Anchor QEA. They, this is a firm with extensive coastal engineering experience, particularly in Southern California. So they have a baseline knowledge of issues in similar type situations. They've also done work specifically with the Bird Refuge before. They recently completed a dredging feasibility analysis, so they have the, the background knowledge on the Bird Refuge. Creeks Division went out to bid for that, for that dredging feasibility analysis back in, in December of 2014. And we don't, we had two bidders, and this was the bidder that we selected. This is a similar type of analysis with this project. And Anchor has agreed to, to continue using the 2014 pricing for this project going forward. Our timeline going forward would, is that we will be performing our technical studies and stakeholder research, or, excuse me, stakeholder outreach, including public meetings. And we'll, we would complete that by April 2017. We would have, we would take that input and complete our conceptual design plans by May of 2017. Then if the city finds a preferred alternative that we'd like to move forward with, we would move forward with our permitting and environmental review. We'd expect that to take approximately 18 months. And then we would have our final design plans and be prepared to bid the project in spring of 2019 with construction about June through November 2019. So the staff recommendation for council today is to authorize Parks and Recreation Director to execute a professional services agreement with Anchor, to perform those technical studies and prepare conceptual design plans. And then, in addition, a contingency amount for any scope of work changes that we need as we go through the process. And with that, I will conclude, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any speaker slips on this one? No. I'll just add, so it's to the council, but at the Sustainability Committee meeting, which we went through all these different options, status quo didn't seem to be a good option, but like you said, it was a baseline. Every other option either cost a lot, or was practically impossible through different regulatory agencies to get approved, or a combination of both. There was not one option that was a good one, you know? So even, I think personally, this option that we have here, we hope can create some relief when necessary and, and resolve a decades-long problem. But we don't have a guarantee, and plus, we still have to go through some significant permitting. So it was the best of the very difficult options, just to put in context what we went through at sustainability. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to carry on on that then, so the option three there was presumably the, the project that one would be looking at, or this, the engineering firm would be determining if it's feasible, or is that, is that what?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember-
Or something else, I suppose, but at least-
Councilmember White, the, the firm will be, will be looking at all of them. I mean, we need to establish some baseline information in terms of the surveying and the topographic maps and bathometric maps and things like that. What we're trying to do is identify an option that best meets the, the city's stated objectives. And then we'll also get cost information going forward with those. One comment I would add to the mayor's comment is that these options were sort of incremental steps. None of the other options would be precluded by these options. So everything sort of is still on the table going forward if, if we were to move forward with this, with one of these options, and then wanted to do something else in addition later on. Similarly, we were, we were looking at the possibility, if, if we move forward with one of these projects, we didn't like how it turned out, could we reverse course and sort of start over? And this gave us that, that, we think this would give us that flexibility as well.
Right. Well, then, comments too?
Sure, yes.
Okay. I just, I appreciate that, that staff is taking another run at this. This is just one of those Rubik Cube elements in our city that we have not been able to figure out. And this is the first time I've seen a trail designated. I know that 10 years ago, there was conversation about trying to find, find a way even along the railroad tracks or whatever. So just, but any, any way to turn that into a, a loop of some kind would be, would be wonderful. And so I appreciate that, that one more run is being made at this very difficult and important issue.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Thank you, Mr. Benson, for your report. And we did have quite a meeting at the Sustainability Committee. I would like you to talk a little bit about the regulatory agencies that will be jumping in on this. I know you had a, a slide on it. But I know that when you start moving sand around, there is a lot of agencies that will be watching what we're doing. And I appreciate that the first bullet point was the odor. But we really should choose the alternative that's best for the natural environment. That's easy for me to say, right? I don't live near it and smell it. And I'm wondering if anybody's taking comfort in the fact that in 100 years, it'll be silted in and the problem will be gone, I guess? So would you just give us an overview of, and you've already been talking to representatives of these agencies, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, I'd like to turn this over to George Johnson, the Creeks Division Supervisor, who's been working on that issue.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario. Yeah, the, the permitting for this project, as Cameron has mentioned, would be pretty extensive for, for anything we do there, even just removing the weir itself, so. But dredging enters a whole nother element, because we have to get rid of the dredge spoils and where we do that, and then what, what kind of implications it has to the habitat, salinity levels, all kinds of things. So at this stage, we haven't really spoken with any of the representatives from the agencies, but what we've done is look at similar projects in Southern California, and seen how complicated their process is. And we're actually looking at some of the other estuaries in Southern California, where they do mechanically break open periodically or regularly, the mounds of those estuaries. And that is both very expensive and, and a little bit controversial right now, because many of the agencies approved that in the past and are not really comfortable with the results right now in some cases. So they, our feeling is that they have, they're going to be a lot more hesitant to approve that in the future. So it's, you know, we'll just have to wait and see. And that's part of the process with the consultant, is to go there and meet with them and, and see what they think of the idea.
Mr. Hart?
Well, that was sort of my question as to whether you had spoken with the state regulatory agencies already, but it sounds like you need more information to make a credible discussion work. It does seem like, looking at that list, you're likely to encounter agencies that have different and competing interests that are not overlapping and compatible, and that you may be able to get an approach approved by one agency but not another. And I don't know how that you're going to, to navigate that. It's a real challenge. Can you give me just a sense of the order of magnitude of the costs we're talking about, about these range of solutions?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, our, our cost estimates were sort of qualitative when we presented them to the Sustainability Committee, and they- we presented them to the Sustainability Committee, and they remain that today. It does depend on some of the detail, like, for example, if we're dredging, how much dredge material we're removing, and then how much of that can we lose on site compared to take off-site and would have to go to a landfill. We did explore whether we could do marine discharge and essentially restore the beaches, but the sediment is really clay, and we would not be able to do any kind of ocean discharge. So our cost estimate on Alternative Two was in the half a million dollar range. Our cost estimate on Alternative Three was in the $2 million range.
And the anticipation is that the Creeks Division would shoulder the capital costs? Is that the presumption?
The, I mean, this is being designed as a water quality improvement and restoration project. To Councilmember Mario's concern, we hope that by improving our water quality down there, we'll reduce the odors also. So it's, but that fits the Measure B guidelines and the purpose of Measure B, I think. And so we have been setting money aside each year in the Creeks Division Capital Improvement Program for a project at the Bird Refuge. We have sufficient funds in that account now to move forward with this stage. Part of this initial conceptual design approach includes identifying grant funding sources also to help supplement Measure B funds for the actual construction of the project.
Well, thank you for that information. And I guess in that context, I'm willing to go forward with the study and look at different options. But, you know, I'm sure you know, this is not going to be easy, so.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Benson, from the conversation we had in Sustainability Committee, maximizing the amount of flushing would diminish the amount of utrification in the body of water. I mean, that's probably the best way to do that, is that correct? And obviously, the most difficult because that's more of Option Three. When it comes to breaching the berm, I know that we do that for public safety reasons at the airport, or we have to explore it sometimes at the Laguna. And then, of course, this one could also be considered a public safety issue if, in fact, we had ever had it rain again in this town. Would all those be separate standalone permitting issues if we were to approach it that way? Or would they, would it be something that the South Coast could apply for, or is that even a known?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yeah. Well, with Galita, for example, right now, they're going through a new process to get permits to do that. So, you know, you can break it up in individual units to try to permit, but we'd probably get it permitted as one big package. But the different agencies would have say over that, and there could be conflicts in between those agencies as to what they want to see. So that's the part that can get complicated. They don't always agree with each other. But we would need specific permits to do that on a regular basis from the Army Corps of Engineer for sure, and from the Coastal Commission. And there would be lots of conditions associated with it, and so it's complicated.
Well, by way of comment, I'd like to say that as much time and effort that we, and money as we spend on the aesthetics and trying to invite people to our community, if we're going to maintain a body of water down there, even though it is going to be difficult, it is going to be expensive, I would encourage that we do what it takes to make that a very appealing place for the gateway to Santa Barbara to be. So that'll be my take on the vote.
Mr. Dominguez?
So what exactly is causing the odor?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm going to ask Jill Murray, our Water Quality Research Coordinator, to answer that for you.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, there's two main types of odors down there. There's one that's hydrogen sulfide, that's rotten eggs. That's when we really get the phone calls most often. And that is from, all of the dissolved oxygen has been consumed. And so now there are bacteria that are producing hydrogen sulfide, and there's nothing, there's no oxygen in there to oxidize it, and it comes out the surface. Then there's also cyanobacteria or blue-green algae blooms. They're also sometimes called habs or harmful algal blooms. They produce a more earthy, garlicky seafood odor. And so they can still be producing a lot of dissolved oxygen, so we're not getting that, the rotten egg smell, but it still can be pretty offensive.
And so I read in the report that the attempts to dissolve oxygen in the water were not successful?
Correct. We did, we have a pilot project. It's called aeration. So we do have tubing with small holes in it. We have compressed air, and it's producing microbubbles in the bottom of the Bird Refuge in the outlet arm. But it was never really designed to try to get oxygen into the water. It's designed to create circulation. So you're creating a current from bottom to top. And then the goal is that that leads to circulation cells, and that can reach out even further and produce another circulation cell and so on. And that, we would have had to put more of that tubing in if we were going to try to use that lake-wide. But it's just not, the Bird Refuge is not deep enough for that technique to work. And so the effect, it really only went, you know, maybe four to five feet out from the bubbles, is what we could see when we measured the water quality top to bottom.
Is that similar to a fish tank, like someone would have in their homes with a pump?
Yes. Most of those aeration stones are not, most of that oxygen is not actually entering the water, but it's creating mixing. And then most of the oxygen comes in from the surface of the aquarium, exchanging air with the water.
So what in the end is the outcome we want to achieve? Is it to eliminate the hydrogen sulfide? Is it to eliminate the algae blooms? And what is the probability that this money that we spend, either the $500,000 or the $2 million, will do that? And is that a temporary or permanent outcome?
I can start with more the scientific end of that answer, and then I'll probably pass it to Mr. Benson. So as long as we have flushing, then sometimes we're going to reset water quality. Instead of just continually putting nutrients in that lead to these algae blooms, we'll flush some of those nutrients out. And that will really help reduce the frequency and magnitude of the algae blooms, which then decompose, use up the oxygen, and produce the rotten egg odor. But we will not probably be able to prevent that all the time, or be able to prevent any and all cyanobacteria blooms, which lead to the more earthy odors and fishy odors. We have such a large, shallow lake that there's so much sediment producing, so much of this hydrogen sulfide, and it has such a short distance to diffuse through that water that I think whenever we have a full lake that's blocked off from circulation, which could happen with these alternatives, we're at risk for having some kind of odor. And I'll pass it along.
Did that answer your question?
So what's the probability, then, that the problem will be solved? I mean, the two things I'm worried about is that we're either kicking the can down the road, and this is going to be a continued expenditure, or that the problem just won't be solved, and this will just be money flushed away, so to speak.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think that that's what we're trying to find out through this next step process, looking at these specific alternatives and starting to gather that information. I mean, we'll have a better idea after we have that information, how often we would expect to see flushing just from tidal, let alone any kind of storms, which will come sometime. But we'll have an idea of the tidal flushing, and so we'll be able to have a better answer for the probability of reducing those odor events.
Has Anchor solved this problem somewhere else in the state?
I'm not sure that they've had this specific problem. From all of the research we've done, we found that our conditions here are pretty unique because of the lack of flushing and the shallowness of the lake area. But Anchor has done this kind of coastal estuary work before. They have been able to secure permits for this kind of work, and so they're familiar with what those issues are, and both on the permitting side and the engineering side.
Are we using any resources from UCSB or the Bren School?
Oh, we are not directly using any resources from UCSB on this project. I have reached out to, especially when we've had some of those wild pink conditions, reached out and tried to get a microbiologist interested and take it on as a project, but that hasn't happened yet.
And the outcome of restoring the water quality and making it a better habitat for wildlife, are those sometimes at odds? Is cleaning this water going to make it more difficult for some of the species that exist in the pond? I imagine they've had centuries and cycles of accommodating themselves to the conditions like this.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, no. There's not much in there right now because of the low oxygen levels. It's the habitat value there's really been reduced, especially what it seems like over the last 10 years. There used to be fish in there, and now because of the extended period of no oxygen at all, no dissolved oxygen, there really is not a lot of aquatic life remaining in there. So the animals that used to depend on it in those historic photos, or the wildlife that did, it was a very different system at that point. It was a salt marsh that dried out periodically, much like Devros Slough is right now. And so there isn't a lot of those organisms still. There's still birds that use it, but we haven't done a study yet, but it appears that the number and diversity of those birds is less than it has been in the past. So hopefully, by improving the water quality, we'll get better habitat for aquatic life, and some of that stuff can return as well as the bird habitat.
Are the birds are actually at a low?
We, I haven't, I can't say that for sure, but it's just what it appears from our observations. There's just not as much, you know, bird life there as there used to be, and there's not as much to eat because the water's not as productive. It's not producing, it's producing a lot of blue-green algae, but not any other aquatic organisms that they can feed on. What we did find is when it dried out here in the drought, that a lot of bugs kind of moved in into the dry areas and places like that. And then we did see some more birds moving in at that point to eat. But, you know, most of them are there. They're still just attracted by the water itself. It's just there's, it doesn't appear to be a lot of food for them. So we hope to improve that situation with improving the water quality.
Which one of the alternatives will restore it most to its original condition?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, of the alternatives being studied, probably the third alternative. But it's, and that's largely because some of the filled area around the margins, we may create more sloping approaches instead of kind of cliffs into the water. The third alternative would include some kind of mechanical opening at this point, and that's obviously not the historic condition.
Will that coincide with rains in the creek water?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think we would be, I think we're still trying to figure out when that would happen, whether that would happen at high tides, whether that would happen around storm events. We would expect during a storm event that it would naturally breach itself. We wouldn't need to be out there with equipment, so. But that has to do a lot with the different elevations and, you know, the berm elevation as well as the bed of the lake and things like that. So we have to have that information first.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did Creeks participate, the one sort of big project that comes to mind that the city has undertaken is at the airport and the extension of the runways and all of the manipulations and restorations that occurred there. Did Creeks participate in that activity?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, that was certainly before my time. I looked over at George Johnson because he's been around the longest, and it might have been before the Creeks Division time even. I feel like that was right around 2000 when that was all happening, but I can't remember specifically.
Well, it was a project of great scale compared even to this. It was a project of great scale, and I don't know whether there's any, anything to be learned from that. But anyway, I'm certainly supportive of this effort going forward. I'd love to see it reattached to Sycamore Creek, but that's probably just a dream.
Would you like to make a comment?
I'm supportive of moving forward. I would move the staff recommendation for investing the funds.
Second. Okay, moved by White, second by Mario. Thank you for the research, going back to the minutes even. I think the historical perspective is really very important in getting the full perspective here. I actually want to acknowledge, actually, one of the early photos that you showed was given to us by Mr. Giordano, who's in the room. So if that looks familiar, thank you for that, the one from the Child Estate and the Clark Estate from the 20s. So this is going back a long time. So good luck with this. Hopefully, by next spring, we'll have some better answers. But it's, I think, good to have this at public hearing when we can because we get questions all the time. And I even just the other day got a suggestion about just having a boat go out there, and tried it, too shallow. And I know we've also tried to put in a lot of potable water. Obviously, during the drought, that's not the best use of potable water, and it didn't really work, right? So that was part of that rationale behind it, too. So hopefully, we can find a better answer. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now move on to item number 16.
Item 16, Cabrillo Pavilion renovation status and restaurant concession.
Okay, so let me, there's a lot of people in the room. So let me just give a little preview of what to expect. We're going to have a staff presentation on the item. I know this went to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I believe we have a couple of commissioners here if they'd like to speak at that point. It'd be up to council for questions. And then I have a whole lot of speaker slips, and I know there's more down there. So when that clock gets to 20 after 3, I'm going to cut off public comment speaker slip. So if you have not submitted a speaker slip and would like to, please do so before that clock hits 3:20. And I'll explain how public comment will work when we get to that point. So with that, Ms. Zachary, it's to you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director. I also have at the staff table Mark Swol, our Business Manager, and Teva Osteringer from the City Attorney's Office. With today's presentation, we'd like to first give you a quick review, the status of the renovation of the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House, and then present the discussion from the staff perspective regarding the next steps for the restaurant concession. So the Cabrillo Pavilion, which is its actual, its official name, was constructed in 1926 and gifted to the city in 1927 by David Gray. At that time, the dedication was that the facility would be used for park purposes and public recreation. It's been almost 90 years since it was gifted to the city. And essentially, during that 90-year history, it has done just that. It's taken varying forms based on the community's needs and changing desires, and it's also been renovated throughout the years, depending on the varied uses. Despite those renovations, the building is almost 90 years old, and it's in need of extensive renovation. The council is very familiar with this. But just to give you some of the needs, we have a total building system replacement. We've got complete site access replacement. We've got structural issues. It is next to the beach, so we've got waterproofing and other activities to do. And then there's the whole interior. The goal here is to create a community recreation facility that continues to serve Santa Barbara community, both residents and visitors, for at least 75 years. So in 2011 is when we really started this project with some RDA funds, and we did a building systems analysis. We started developing a business plan, and we did a lot of stakeholder outreach. That was put on hold due to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, but restarted in January 2014 as a high priority of the City Council, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the department. Again, as I mentioned in my last slide, this is what we consider a premier coastal beach access facility and for community recreation. So the objectives of the renovation project are, first and foremost, maintain the historic integrity, at the same time, address all of the building systems, structural and seismic issues, improve access, renovate the interiors, increase site safety. And that's one of the things we've really been struggling with, particularly in recent years, is how to make the site a safer place, a more welcome place for more people to come because our goal is to enhance programming and to expand community use. Similar to other major renovations the city's undertaken, we'll also be striving for LEED Silver Designation as part of the renovation. So as I mentioned, we started the project again in January 2014, working with our consultants, KBZ, and their subconsultant engineers and architects. We spent a great deal of time doing all of the technical studies that we needed to do, geology, biology, doing the preliminary structural work, the historic assessments, all in preparation of our— all in preparation of achieving a coastal development permit, which we received in September 2015. We subsequently received our final Historic Landmarks Commission approval in March 2016. So, essentially for the last eight months, we've been going through sort of the final design review approval process and then also preparing our final plans to submit for a review by Building and Safety. Those are being submitted this week. We anticipate that actually the review process will be quite lengthy because we have extensive plans for the project. However, we anticipate having building permits sometime in the first quarter of 2017 with the idea that once we go out to bid and we go through the whole bidding process for project construction, we would be prepared to start the project in early 2018. It is a full building renovation, which means everything in the building would close, and that's been a key discussion point as we've moved forward with the project in the last number of years. We anticipate construction, really best-case scenario is probably 18 months. We want to only lose one summer season, particularly since the beach is one of the best places to be in the summertime, and that would be our goal with this project. I'd like just to walk you through some visuals, just to take a look at what the plan is. I mentioned historic integrity. As you can see from this rendering, it looks essentially the same, but actually there's a lot of key differences. Key here is access to the building on the eastern side and a much enlarged patio entrance into the pavilion. Right now, when you walk in, walk up the steps, you're forced to go in the building really quickly. So, we want to enhance the face of the building on the street as well as access into the building. And at the public promenade, bathhouse level, essentially it looks quite similar to what you see today if you sort of dusted off some of the structural issues that we have, but we want to maintain the public promenade and a little bit of history is this was East Boulevard and it was an actual road when the building was constructed. Cabrillo Boulevard had not been built at that time. The portico area here is very important for public gathering. As you can see, that's where the restaurant concession currently is. And then as you look upstairs, a key aspect of the upstairs building is the enclosed portion of the terrace. That enclosure first occurred in 1941, so it's been in place for a long time, but it will be much upgraded when we do the renovation. In this rendering as well, it shows improved access. We found a way to do so without creating a long ramping system, again, maintaining the historic integrity, yet also ensuring the coastal access. Looking at a site plan, and I'll just show this very briefly, this is the portico pavilion promenade area. So, as you can see, it's all open. It will remain pedestrian. Access up to the first floor will continue on the west side, a ramping system and then a ramping through and up in here. At the bottom level, we're actually restoring access into the building on the eastern side and then providing a new service entrance. Right now, the only way into the first floor is actually through the doors that are facing the beach. There's no back-of-door access for the current restaurant or any other activities at the first floor. That access will also lead to an elevator that will lead people up to the second floor so that there'll be more integration between the two buildings. I mentioned site safety. We do have a playground here. This is the site of the former wading pool, which went, was filled in in 1979, I believe. And a key objective here is to increase safe sightlines and safety here, so we're opening that up, still maintaining the playground feature, and then enhancing access onto the beach. At the pavilion level, our key objective here is to enhance what we already have. We're actually eliminating the staff offices, returning the first room that you walk into to what it once was. It was originally called the Tea Room, which will have a whole open area in that first room. Sorry, I lost my mouse. The special event room will be essentially the same and the enclosure will be slightly smaller, much upgraded with open windows. The actual second floor will be able to better support social functions. The catering area will support the work of caterers right now. It's not very functional and very challenging. The mechanical systems in the building often mean that air and activities between the two floors are shared, and so we want to eliminate that and improve that as well. When you go down to the first floor, and this is really where the major changes are happening on the interior, we are reducing the staff offices essentially to two and then a staff desk. And the idea is they're there to support the operation of the building as a seven-day-a-week community recreation facility. Key aspects are maintaining a shower locker area and moving that to the west side of the interior of the building. Right now, it's split with the women's on the west and the men's on the east. Integrating multipurpose rooms for recreation and other types of programming, and that's a large room right back here, which once was where the woolen bathing suits were washed. It was the laundry room once upon a time. And then a smaller one here and then one also here in the northeastern corner of the building. I mentioned access. This is an access that we'll restore. This would be a sports storage area. The area in yellow, sort of the darker area in yellow, is the area that's designated for the restaurant concession space. And it's assumed that this area in the portico will also be part of any outdoor seating area of the restaurant concession space. We have a smaller, light-yellow concession space here that we're still determining how we might use. So, the restaurant concession now, since its inception, there's always been some sort of snack bar or restaurant. It's been a community, public recreation facility. People have gone to the beach and they've gone to events and they've needed to have something to eat. It's, for the most part, over the last number of decades, been more of a casual snack bar style with a greater focus on breakfast and lunch. And the East Beach Grill, which is currently operating that location, has been there since 1983. First opened their doors, I believe, in February of 1984. The current agreement that we have dates to 1998, so it's close on 20 years old. And it was first made with John Williams. John Williams transferred the business to Francisco Aguilera in 2008, so we've been working with Mr. Aguilera since then. The current lease does expire or ends on December 31, 2017. It was a 10-year agreement with two five-year options to renew, so it's in the second five-year renewal period. Looking ahead, given the extensive renovations the city is going to undertake and the investment in the building, the building plan and the business plan call for community recreation area that's open seven days a week. It's currently open five days a week for extended hours, for extended recreation programming. We anticipate the need to have enhanced restaurant service, both of the similar snack bar style to serve folks who are at the facility, people going to the beach, but also people who are just going to the restaurant, which currently occurs today. And also, we anticipate that there'll be a significant investment in fitting out the kitchen and building the dining room. Essentially, when we've completed the work effort for reconstructing the building, it will be an empty shell. And so, the future concessionaire will come in and make all of those tenant-related improvements to be able to operate a restaurant. I would like to just talk a little bit about the East Beach Grill. We've been coordinating, communicating with Mr. Aguilera since 2011 and in the last couple of years, had a number of meetings with him and his attorney. We do have a good relationship with him and we're in regular project communication. The revenue that we receive today from the East Beach Grill is about 30% of the total revenue that we receive for the building. The other funds come from the upstairs and the revenue and also our programs, our recreation programs. We have a very vibrant summer program in particular. It's beach-related, sports-related, and then of course, the very popular junior lifeguard program. And then there are other events that occur there, sporting events that are put on by other parties, whether it's Reef and Run or whether it's the triathlon, and those also bring some revenue to the department. As you can tell today, Mr. Aguilera has a very loyal customer base. Breakfast is very popular at the restaurant. And then Mr. Aguilera has also shared his support for our programs and in the last number of years, has provided $5,000 to support the junior lifeguard programs. We would like to point out that he is a tenant in good standing and throughout this process, understand the challenge it would be to face the fact that the whole building is closing. We're facing that fact as well as a department figuring out where we're relocating programs and staff and figuring out how we'll adjust to the loss of revenue, those sorts of things. And so, we are sensitive to those concerns and we have been since the beginning. A number, I think it was about 18 months ago, Mr. Aguilera approached us with his attorney, interested in the future concession and an exclusive negotiation with the city, and cited City Council Resolution 93127, which council adopted in 1993 to clarify the options available to the city regarding lease renewals and the city's flexibility due to specific circumstances. We're coming to you today now because we're really at a point in the project. We spent a lot of time trying to get to the coastal development permit phase and that, there was a lot of uncertainty around that. So, we didn't begin to tackle this question until now because really we weren't in the position to do that. Now, we believe we have a project. We reviewed this. The Parks and Recreation Department met with the city administrator, city attorney, and finance department and reviewed this request and took it into consideration extensively and determined that in this instance, it is, it would not be a lease renewal as contemplated under the resolution, since the lease will expire and the building will close for 18 months. And what we'll have when we start at the beginning will be an entirely different facility. It will be upgraded. It will be more like a brand-new building and therefore what could be considered new-to-market, not as it is today. The space will be larger, it'll be upgraded. We'll be looking for both the balance between the type of service that we want to maintain at the beachfront because clearly it needs to support folks that go to the beach, whether to meet friends or exercise or take their families, yet also have extended hours and function in a restaurant style. And so, there's more things going on, we believe, in the future than there is today. We anticipate there'll be a significant investment and we've estimated that at about half a million dollars based on some conceptual plans, and those are attached to your staff report. And then also, looking at it, it is a premier coastal facility and from the city's perspective, from a public policy perspective, there's an opportunity for all businesses to bid on something like this. So, the benefits of a competitive bid is it's an opportunity for us to gauge the market where we, this is something new. It's a very unique situation for the department and the city to be in. There could be multiple concepts that are proposed. We anticipate that it will allow the city to be fair and objective in its analysis of the future concessionaire, as well as consider the financial benefit to the city and taxpayers and the extent to which the concession will bring improved amenities for park users and be able to operate successfully. We have looked around at other beachfront restaurants and seen how they've, different cities have approached it and evaluated their performance and a competitive bid would allow us to do something similar to that. When we think about what an RFP would have, these are the aspects of what the RFP would include, both the qualifications and references related to a similar operation, presentation of a business concept and plan, including food service plan, style, pricing, and consistency with the goals of the department, marketing and advertising, capital improvement plan, financial condition of the company, proposing, projections of revenues and expenses, and then also the ability to have the insurance requirements that the city would require. We anticipate that Mr. Aguilera would be in a very strong position to competitively bid on this. We did take this to the Parks and Recreation Commission on August 24. In addition to the staff presentation and presentation from East Beach Grill representatives, there were a number of people in the audience, 24 chose to spoke as part of public comment in support of a new lease agreement for Mr. Aguilera and the East Beach Grill. The commission itself recommended for one, that he be provided an opportunity to negotiate a new lease agreement for a reasonable period of time and that if that did not prove to be successful, the city would then move forward with a competitive bid process. Well, we respect the commission's recommendation and the goal of having public hearings is to have a public hearing for discussion. Staff still does recommend that the city initiate a competitive bid process to secure a restaurant concessionaire for the renovated building. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So, I have cut off the speaker slip since it's passed 3:20. Thank you for that and I'll get to that in a second. We have two commissioners here. Why don't you come up at this point and then we'll have questions from the council before we go to public comment. Ms. Longstreet.
Hi, I'm Bebe Longstreet. I'm chairing the commission this year. As Jill said, the commission voted four to one to give the East Beach Grill a first right to negotiate a contract within a limited time to be determined by staff. The majority of the commission felt that as a tenant in good standing, Mr. Aguilera deserved to have the first right at negotiating a contract. Leslie Wiscombe will speak to that vote. I voted against the motion. I believe East Beach Grill would be a strong candidate in the RFP process because of their track record with the city. They have three concessions, East Beach Grill, Char West, and the Ice Cream Shop out on the Wharf. But that we're not representing the best interests of the residents of the city by restricting this process. The staff report outlines the reasons for this recommendation to go to RFP very well, and I agree with those reasons. New facility, different operating expectations, it will be closed for 18 months, and the new financial commitment by the operator. I'm also concerned that the process has become so politicized that it is now more of a popularity contest than a business negotiation. I want to make sure a contract is written to best meet the needs of the public and to support the ongoing revenue requirements of the updated facility. The city budget model has changed in the last 20 years and now the Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for revenue to support programs and maintain our facilities. We have cut valuable programs and increased costs to the point where many families are not able to participate as they were in the past. So, we need to think more like a business now and we need to treat this as the business negotiation that it is. I feel that this process has become just too political and with considerable lobbying rather than strong business tenants on it. So, I, this is a public property and I believe that the process needs to be open to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wiscombe?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Leslie Wiscombe and I'm here to share some of the commission's rationale for recommending that the city enter into an exclusive lease negotiation with Mr. Aguilera for a reasonable period of time that covers upgrades to and post-renovation operation of the East Beach Grill. My fellow commissioners made some excellent points during our commission meeting. Commissioner Cavazo stated that every vendor responding to an RFP will check all the required boxes and give it a shiny wrapper, and that can be risky. In the end, the city has a responsibility to look out for its best interests, and that's what negotiations are for, to seek that win-win relationship, and this can be accomplished with exclusive negotiations. Commissioner Lesnar Buxton stated that he comes from an area of California that faces gentrification, where new market concepts have failed, and felt that if it isn't broken, don't try to fix it. And my reasoning included Mr. Aguilera's capacity and willingness to commit a significant investment in the facility, his willingness and enthusiasm to commit to longer operating hours post-renovation, his longstanding positive relationship with the city, and the reduced risk that his successful track record engenders, his generosity in giving back to the community, and his commitment to continue meeting the needs of the city and the goals of the department. The East Beach Grill has been a longstanding and excellent partner with the city and enjoys tremendous community support, as you can see here today. We believe it is in the city's best interest to grant Mr. Aguilera an opportunity to build upon this positive relationship and urge you to support the commission's recommendation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions first from council to staff or the commissioners? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Zachary, if you were to approach consultant, RFP, what would the timeline and expense be of that process to develop the RFP?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, the department on a regular basis and the city on a regular basis does RFPs, so that's something that we would do in-house. We wouldn't go out to find a consultant to prepare an RFP. We recently completed a pretty complex one for golf course management. We do it for technical consultants that we hire on a regular basis. It's rare that we would come forward with a sole source recommendation, and if we did, there's a basis for that. So, we would be doing that in-house. and if we did, there's a basis, um, for that. So, we would be doing that in-house. Um, we anticipate an RFP process would be about six months, which is the timeline that we would propose moving forward with. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and this is to, to city staff, perhaps more in general. The revenue from this, uh, activity, is it based on, on, to date, is it, it's based on the, the gross of the business itself?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, there's, there's two factors. One, there's a base rent amount, and then there's a percent of, above gross receipts. So, it's based on gross receipts, but there's a base amount, and anything above that, um, is based on a percentage of gross receipts.
And, and how does this compare to some of the other, uh, restaurants that the city has this relationship with?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, um, the waterfront department has a number of restaurant leases. Um, the one that's most similar to, to this one is the Shoreline Cafe, for example, on the beach. Um, and the information that we have related to that, now granted, they just did a new lease agreement in 2014, they have a different base rent, um, their base rent is higher than the one, and then, but their percentage is, is a little bit lower as well. So, apples to apples, we look more at amount of revenue and then the, and then the per-square-foot of revenue.
That's, I would think the per-square-foot would be the...
Is, is a better way to actually compare. And then, there's other factors to consider in terms of operating hours and location. I mean, there's a lot of different things to consider, so you can't consider it apples to apples, but there are ways of looking at how the performance is different, and, and what the structure of the agreements are, and the outcome of that structure.
And so, what is that?
Well, it, there's the lease area, there's the length of the agreement, the, the amount of investment in upgrading the facility, um, actual revenues over time, and then, for example, the rent, uh, percent for the Shoreline Cafe is 10 to 11.4%.
What I'm trying to do is get some kind of, uh, real-world number about, is this, is this a, a high-revenue, is this a low-revenue facility, vis-à-vis our other, our other rent situations, is kind of where I'm trying to go?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, it could be considered, it is lower-revenue facility at this time. It would be our objective for that revenue to increase, in part because of all the improvements that we would be making, and because the, the restaurant would be operating for more hours as well.
Okay.
And that would be, uh, if I could just add, that would be our goal. One of the things we're looking at very carefully is not just the cost to renovate the building, but the cost to operate the renovated building, and so, the cost to operate the building will be greater than it is today.
But, but if I were to, to try and distill that down, it, today, it operates as a, on the lower end of, of our coastal, uh, lease hold situations, and our goal would be to increase that. So, perhaps that could be part of the conversation. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Ms. Zachary, I look at the boathouse, and it has, at, um, Hendry's Beach, and it has a snack shop, and someone told me that the Coastal Commission requires access to, um, snack food, or for lower-income people, there has to be, um, a way for them to have access to, so it can't just be a big fancy restaurant, it has to have, is, is that, is that correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Maria, I don't know if it's a Coastal Commission requirement, I do know it's a requirement of their lease agreement between county parks, the county, and the operators of the boathouse, and certainly, that is something that would be a high priority for Parks and Recreation, and also, a priority that the restaurant really needs to be accessible to a broad range of Santa Barbara residents and visitors.
And may I ask how the RFP, how the proposals would be evaluated if we decided to go for an RFP? And, and it, you know, with our CDBG process, there's a ranking, and so many points, and so many points. I'm sure there's some objectivity, some subjectivity, and when, and do they fill in the blanks, or I just wanted to give people a sense of how it would be a fair process if you had 10 or 20 proposals to look at?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, um, the process would be very similar to what we do with other RFPs. Um, it describes the project objectives, it describes the submittals that we need, it describes what the criteria will be, so the proposers know going in, as well as what the, the weighted value of those. Uh, when we do do, um, uh, RFPs, when we're looking for something specific, you know, qualifications, experience is really important, um, their business concept plan, and that was something that was really important, for example, with the golf course management, their financial capacity is critical, as, as, uh, in an investment would it be, and basically, what they propose, um, to invest in the facility, projecting their revenues and expenses, but then also, what they think they can generate for the city. So, we would show any, in the RFP, it was very, very clearly stated, uh, when we did the analysis of the, um, the golf course, we had a golf management consultant participate, we had city attorney's office, finance department, city administrator's office, we had a broad cross-section of management staff that did that evaluation, and then conducted the interviews, which is an approach we take at varying levels of the organization.
And my final question, at least at this point, is, will you be asking for someone to submit a proposal that includes breakfast, lunch, and dinner? So, you really do want to go for dinner service?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, uh, Maria, we anticipate that the, the bait, the bottom of the facility, our goal is to have it open 15 hours a day. Now, it might vary Monday through Friday because of people's work schedules, and be longer on the weekend, uh, and as part of that, propose or put in a project description, how a restaurateur would propose being able to serve those folks, but more importantly, because if you really think about the base, it would be people coming to have dinner there that may not also be in the facility, um, and then, how that might vary by season, because that could be a factor as well, because as the seasons change, it becomes less or more desirable to be in different parts of Santa Barbara based on the weather. So, we'd be looking for responders to tell us what they think would be viable, and how they, they think they would move that forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So, the, um, expectations that you have for the additional cost of this newly renovated building, um, you're, you're looking for the concessions in the building to help cover those costs, in fact, to probably make more money than that, so we can have money drop to the bottom line for Parks and Recreation. So, what is the order, what, what are you looking for in terms of increased revenue from the operation of this represent, restaurant, from the, um, other facilities within the building? Just give order of magnitude, scale, how, what is the cost today versus what you need to generate in the future to maintain the building when it's improved?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, Mark Sewell, I'm the Business Manager for Parks and Recreation. I think I'd like to answer that in terms of what our revenue aspirations could potentially be when, when looking at the, um, similar restaurants to, to Councilmember White's kind of question earlier on. If you, if you look at, um, the boathouse, and you look at, uh, facilities in Santa Monica, and also, our own facility on the, on the beach and shoreline, you see quite a broad range of, of revenue that the cities or the landlords receive. Um, and in the most recent year, one of those properties actually paid their, their landlord $720,000, which is four or five times what we're currently receiving for our restaurant concession. And so, you know, while we're still trying to work out what the exact costs of operating the building will be, depending on what the programming is, and how, how long it's open, and all those types of things, the restaurant concession could clearly help considerably towards those costs, and as you say, hopefully, contribute some, some revenue that could be then reinvested in programming.
So, that is the goal, is to pay for the operation of the building with the new restaurant concession, or is that an aspiration?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's one aspect. So, today, it's about a third of the revenue that's generated. Uh, when we look at a renovated first floor, the pavilion level, it will be a premier public social event center. It's a great place today, uh, but it'll be even more enhanced, and, and we anticipate, we could double the revenue there as well. Um, our recreation programs, it depends on a lot of factors. We balance both bringing in revenue, but also, supporting free public access to recreation as well. So, while we want to, uh, have revenue from our recreation programs, we always look to the other ways we can generate revenue, so that we can support those recreation programs and make sure they're affordable for as many Santa Barbara residents as possible. Um, will our recreation programs go and that, grow in that revenue as well? Absolutely, because we will have dedicated recreation space in the first floor that we don't have today. We have nowhere for anyone to go, well, I should take that back. We have a gym, I think it was put in in 1972, and, and there are people that use it, but we could enhance that tremendously. As well as, by upgrading the whole interior, we can, we can tremendously enhance people's desire just to use the facility. Right now, it's so outdated and clunky, and as I said before, we've got site safety considerations. The more we bring people in to use that facility, the more it'll be a positive, um, advantageous place to be. So, we will see a revenue uptick as well in that respect.
But you will have increased costs to maintain the new building, too. I mean, one of the best examples is the, the bathrooms, and the condition of the bathrooms, and the level of maintenance that you're able to deliver to that facility today is, is just not acceptable. It's, it's below anybody's standard, and that's one of the problems, is we've got an old building that you just can't keep plastering over to fix, so you have to re-renovate it, you have to modernize it. To, in order to preserve that asset, you're going to have to invest more in maintenance of the bathrooms, for example, um, going forward, and that's going to cost more. And so, there's a need to generate additional revenue just to maintain the building as, in the new condition that it's going to be in. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
The, um, second floor, will there be any concessionaire opportunities on the second floor?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, the, the pavilion-level floor, the upstairs, uh, is essentially for, for public and private events. Um, the only, um, there's no plan to have any concession up there, but the second floor will support someone having a private event, they can bring in their caterer, and so, it'll be more likely to raise revenue through, through that initiative.
And are things such as pop-up events going to be possible?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, um, depending on the type of event, and our policy is anything's, anything's possible, as long as it's within city rules and regulations, certainly. It, it has been for a number of years, a very popular wedding location. It could be also a very, um, useful small conference location, particularly with the downstairs room and the connection between the floors, and the fact that there will be a restaurant there as well. So, we're trying to create more sort of synergy between all levels of the building, yet also, recognize the upstairs is much more likely for social-type events, it's always been that way, and the downstairs really needs to be a true community recreation facility.
What's been the occupancy level of the, uh, second floor, the pavilion?
Um, the occupancy level, it's 200-seated capacity, it does have...
You mean like, how many nights, or how many days a week does it tend to be fill?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, um, as you can imagine, the demand on a Saturday in, in the summer is probably going to be a little higher than a Wednesday in the winter. Um, and so, typically, we would be expecting to sell 80 to 90% of our Saturdays throughout the year, and we have oversubscription during the summer times, and it's always a challenge then to try to bring people into the building who wants to get married on a Tuesday night in, you know, in November, it's a real challenge. But what we think with, um, the renovations to the building and, and opening up more and more opportunities for many different things, we, we're hoping that the utilization of all of the building will increase.
And regarding the, uh, the gym, what's the plan for the gym? Is it going to be more weightlifting equipment like is there now, or is it going to be something more compatible with the ocean?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we are currently actually, um, have, in discussion with different, um, athletic, uh, business operators in Santa Barbara and evaluating the different options. There's a lot of desire to have some sort of exercise component. The idea behind the multipurpose room is that it could provide that, but we also could dedicate some space for, for classes, whether they're the classes that are very popular today, related to yoga, Pilates, or different types of activities, or what they will, what will be popular when the building's finally open. We're sensitive to the fact that there's always this trend, and so, we're watching those trends, and whatever we design, we want to be able to make sure we can be flexible to, to the trend. We have two other rooms that could also be used for private classes, similar to what we have at the Creole Recreation Center, and we'd like it to be something that's consistent. Like a gym, but not a private gym, a community facility, but then also, great opportunity for drop-in use, because that's one of the things that the city can provide through its facilities, is to be able to drop in and use something, not have to go for a planned program, buy a pass for the day, but not have to be part of, you know, a monthly fee or something like that.
And regarding, uh, the six-month timeline for an RFP, so just so I understand that more clearly, what would that, what's the first day, and what's the last day? Like, where does that get us from one point in the process to the other?
Madam Mayor and Council Dominguez, I, we would anticipate, you know, the first day is putting together the RFP document. We have a number of models that we would draw from. Um, and then, the second part would be determining its distribution and advertising, and the length of the RFP. A decent amount of response time, because some work does go into that, and we have to be respectful of people who are proposing. Uh, at the end of the six months, we would be ready to, to come to council with a recommendation, or to be working on a contractual agreement with a preferred operator, and that can take, you know, more or less time, because it goes back and forth with the details, uh, but that would be our objective.
So, the, and then what I would, was interested in comparing that to would be the other alternative, which is negotiating with one particular person. How long would that take, using that same kind of six-month scale? So, you're saying at the end of the six months, that's when you would be prepared to bring it to council, so that's when you'd agendize the results of the RFP process? So, how long would that same timeframe be, I guess, on average, when you're negotiating with a single party?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, you know, that timeline could, could be shorter. I think it really depends on how the negotiations go, and how we would be able to come to an agreement, that we had a, a contractual agreement that both parties could live with. And until we put out what the city's looking for, it's hard to really be able to answer that completely.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to follow up on logistics then, so, the Parks and Rec Commission recommendation said to look for a reasonable period of time, uh, to work with one particular, with, with Mr. Aguilera. So, what is a reasonable period of time?
Madam Mayor, you know, we've been trying to define that, and again, it depends on sort of the negotiation. It could be four months, it could be as many as six months.
Okay, so, worst-case, let's just say, worst-case scenario, we give, um, them a six-month shot to negotiate, whatever, for whatever reason, on either end, something doesn't work out. In six months, then you would go out to an RFP, which they could obviously be a part of, and you'd need six months from that point to go through the RFP process. Um, does that give enough time, given everything else going on with the renovation, to get what you need? Because, it would, right, because you have really till the end of 2017, because that's when the current lease is up? Is that the thought process here?
Madam Mayor, there, there's a couple of things to consider. One, we are finishing our final plans and going through the building permit process. Whoever does become the next concessionaire will have to do their own permitting process, design work and permitting process. In a perfect world, we would have the building open and a, and a functioning restaurant at the same time, so when we go out to bid next March, for example, we'll want to know how to dovetail in the improvements that occur in the restaurant space, since those will be separate from our project. And so, there's scheduling, there's a variety of things, um, that play a role in determining, you know, whether more or less time is needed. We've assumed less, we need more time on the front end, because sometimes it can take a long time to get through the permitting process, just because it can be complicated and, and it doesn't happen overnight. Um, we would like to be able to go out to bid and know who the restaurant concessionaire is, and what their needs will be for tenant improvements, so by March.
Okay, so for our thought process, if we wanted to go along with the Parks and Recreation recommendation, a six-month reasonable period of time would work. Hopefully, that would work out, but if it doesn't, that still gives you enough time to move forward with an RFP. Yes or no?
Yes, it would, it would do that.
Okay, okay. That's, that's, that's good. We could say 12 months, we could say 18 months, but six months seems to be the number. Okay, all right. Um, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sort of following up, it's interesting how the thought process then gets back down to this negotiating process here, um, and we're trying to compare the two. The RFP, I think you've given a good description of, of how that would, would unfold. How would the private negoti- How would the private negotiation process unfold? How would you expect that to occur? Would you be making your best deal and bringing that forward? Would there be a recommendation for approval or not approval? Can you flesh that out a little bit, and maybe even when it gets your turn, Joe, you can talk about that a little bit, too?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we would be looking for all the same things that we would ask for in an RFP submittal. So this slide sort of outlines some of those things that we would ask for first, and then we would, prior to that, outline the city's objectives, because someone who was responding to that would need to know what our objectives are in order to make the best use of time, and that would be the first place that we'd start.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, when the City Council adopted the resolution in 1993, it talked about renewal of lease, negotiating with the existing tenant. When the, I wanted to give the council the history on that, and that was based off of a lease negotiation with the, I believe it was the ice cream store on the Wharf. The tenant, who had come in, had a five-year lease, had done tenant improvements, and there was, at the, almost the conclusion of that five-year lease, a member of the public had come forward and asked that the City Council consider a request for proposal process. From what I understand, council considered that and then came up with this resolution that set forth, yes, when there's an existing tenant, there's considerations. The tenants put forth considerable money in creating the tenant improvements that go for a restaurant, and then there's criteria that we should look at if they're a tenant in good standing. In this case, they also, the resolution also sets forth that when there's a space that's new to the market, then the council should consider an RFP process. And the purpose of the RFP process is it gives the city the increased bargaining power. When you go forward with exclusive negotiation, the person that you're bargaining with is going to come in with a better bargaining position. They're going to come in with their higher offer, as opposed to a sealed bid proposal where someone's coming in with their best offer, and you're negotiating at that level. So that's where there's the difference between those two. And in this case, the lease with Mr. Aguilera is going to naturally expire in December of 2017. Regardless, that space will need to be, all the tenant improvements will need to be removed. When it is constructed, it will be returned as a shell, an empty shell, with that the new tenant will need to commit a significant, I think it's at least, we've estimated at least a half a million dollars of tenant improvements. That's, and also the fixtures and furnishings for a restaurant, so that's a significant, it's significantly different. It's going to be new to the market. It's not simple negotiations of price and terms of, you know, five years at this base rent. It's a completely different space and a way to look at that space. So that, I just wanted to make the distinction between the two and what that resolution was setting forward.
And I think we're well aware of that. I just am trying to weigh these two different processes, and I appreciate you making the point that there's more opportunity for, you really are, in the RFP process, people are going to be trying to get their, put their best foot forward or their best offer forward earlier, perhaps. Okay. And then it would, but then the process would be, at the end of that negotiation, if it were a private negotiation or sole negotiation, then whatever the outcome of that is would then be brought to council, is that, that's what it would be? It's not going to, there would not be a judgment call made by staff on that, it would be something that would come forward. There may be a recommendation of whether it's a good thing or not a good thing. I guess that's what we would hope to get out of it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a couple more questions, then we'll go to public comment. So Mr. Hart, and then Ms. Mario, and then we'll go to public comment.
I think Ms. Zachary mentioned the lease revenue history of the boathouse, and could you tell me more about that? What is, what has that resulted in revenue to the county as that transition has occurred from the Brown Pelican to the boathouse? Do you know that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we actually do have that information, because we did some research regarding a number of beachfront facilities, just to kind of gauge what was out there. I would ask Mark Sewell to answer that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, so, yes, the boathouse, as I believe, opened its doors, I believe, in 2008. It took over from the Brown Pelican, had an extensive remodel. And in its first full year of operations, it delivered, I think, $248,000 to the county. And its most recent year was $720,000 to the county. So that's significant growth from fiscal year '09 to fiscal year '16, so that's seven years' growth.
You don't know what the Brown Pelican did in its last year, do you?
Not for right now, but I could certainly bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Ms. Zachary, could you clarify? In the council agenda report, page six, the bottom paragraph states that if a private negotiation or exclusive negotiation is not successful, there's concern that a new tenant, restaurant tenant, may not be ready when the rest of the building is. And I read it over, and I just wanted to know if you could clarify that. If the city first negotiates exclusively with Mr. Aguilera, and the negotiations prove unsuccessful, proceeding with an RFP process could result in the restaurant space not being ready for operation when the renovated pavilion opens. Is there some wiggle room there, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, again, it's the unknown, and wanting to make sure we could move forward in a manner that we thought was likely to be most successful, and not necessarily yet having a timeline in place for doing one thing first and then proceeding with the next. We have optimal timelines, and our goal would be to move things forward. Sometimes they take longer than others, and so it's just that risk factor that we wanted to raise for council that could exist. I think that's one of the things we wanted to point out. And if I could just respond to Councilmember Hart's question, too, about the boathouse, it is, it's a different operation in that it's open many more hours than the East Beach Grill is. So that's why we looked at the per square foot as a better way to sort of gauge it, but they have been very successful. It's a different style than perhaps we would be seeking at the Cabrillo Pavilion. We want to be able to balance more objectives in terms of having both it as a destination, because it is now today, people go there for breakfast, and then they go on with their day, as well as a place that supports people that are recreating and using the beach or using the facility. So there's a little different balance there than maybe what's experienced at the boathouse today.
One final question, Madam Mayor, thank you. And this is maybe for Mr. Casey. When was the last time that a waterfront or coastal restaurant space was open for bid in the city of Santa Barbara? You know, on the breakwater, on the pier, the Minno Cafe, I know, went away, and Brophy Brothers ran in there, but...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, I think it's when we got the Marine Center down on the waterfront, where the Chuck's Waterfront Grill is in those properties. So I think that's about 1996 in that era.
So it doesn't happen very often?
No, correct. But this is, you know, that was a similar situation, where you had a new building, and you completely renovated the building, and then you went out for the restaurant concessionaires. We just don't have facilities that we renovate to the extent that we do with this one with a tenant.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I jump in and also to answer Ms. Mario's question a little bit, to provide maybe some guidance on this question, the logistics? If you want to consider perhaps going with the exclusive right to negotiate, and then what would happen if then you, that didn't work out and you had to go to the bidding process? So I think the way to look at that, because of this concern that, well, what if the lease space was, the tenant improvements weren't completed by the time that the rest of the building were completed? That would be a problem. So what you would want to look at in order to determine how much time to give for this exclusive negotiation, I think you would want to work backwards. And so you would, you would try and estimate, Ms. Zachary would need to try and estimate, okay, how much, how much time is going to need to complete the renovation of the building? 18 months. So, you know, she really would need to work backwards, and so she's saying, okay, we have a year. She thinks she has a year. So, you know, six months for the exclusive negotiation, then six months for, if that didn't work out, for the bidding process. So if we've got a year, then that's, you know, provides a little wiggle room. So, you know, maybe there isn't that concern there, that it's not going to be completed by the time that the rest of the building were ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a lot of speaker slips here. We do want to hear everything everyone has to say. Obviously, thank you for your patience. We obviously have a lot of questions and want to make a good answer. I would ask that you keep your comments about the public comment outside this room. If you want to cheer or jeer or whatever, you can do whatever you want outside City Council chambers, but we want to really focus on what people are saying. You'll have two minutes here at the podium. I know some people have waived their two minutes to someone else, so you can have that up to 10 minutes maximum. I'll be strict on that time. And you have to be in the room when I call your name if you're waiving your time, right? You can't just admit a slip and then watch from home. That doesn't count. So some people I noticed saying, I waived my two minutes, but not, I don't know to whom. It was just, I just give my two minutes. If there's some need for someone to have two extra minutes, I'll see if you're here, and if not, I'll invite you if you want to speak at the end. You're welcome to do so. Since we have a lot of speakers, we may take a break. We'll see how things go, so we can get through it all and really concentrate. Once we're done with public comment, we're done with public comment, and it comes to council, and unless we bring, ask a question from anyone to come up to answer, it's, the conversation's really up here, unless we have questions for staff or any one of you. So hopefully, that goes through it all. And again, thank you for your patience on that. And we'll start with Joe Howell, and I want to make sure the people who are yielding their time are here. So Nan Sizney is, Nan, are you here? You're right there, thank you. Rita Aguilera is right there. Nikita is right, Narita, thank you. Francisco's right there. And Vasilis Hernandez?
Vasilis.
Thank you, all right. So, Mr. Howell, you have up to 10 minutes. You'll be followed by John Ketchian, and if you hear your name up at bat, if you can be close to the podium, so that way we can just keep this moving after Mr. Howell is done.
Yes.
Yes, one more question. Go ahead.
I have a couple of students here who have stayed a long time. Is there any way, we tried to put their names in, both Miles and Evan...
Look at that, they're the next two on my list.
Wonderful, thank you.
Just magic, all right. So, and you don't have to take your entire time. You can say, I agree with the previous speakers. You don't have to repeat everything, but we do want to listen to what you have to say. Thank you very much. Mr. Howell, the podium's yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Snyder, council members. Thank you for the chance to speak and speak first. My name is Joe Howell with the firm of Howell, Moore &amp; Golf. Proud to be speaking on behalf of my good friend and owner, who began his tenure with East Beach Grill in March of 1984, when they opened the doors. With him is his wife Rita, his daughter Narita, and the general manager, Ulysses Hernandez. Also, I'm speaking, they're all in the front row. I'm speaking on behalf of Francisco's 24 full-time employees, lots of supporters and customers, many of whom are in the room with their little beach ball badge. And I understand, I've seen some, not all, of the communications you've received, and I know you've considered those. So first is a Parks and Recreation Department report and the alternatives. The report, you had the materials that Ms. Zachary just gave a summary of, are very good. They're a great history of East Beach Grill. We also, on behalf of Francisco, would like to acknowledge that the Parks and Recreation staff has been very cooperative with us, starting in July of 2014. Then-director Nancy Rapp, Jill Zachary, and Rich Hanna invited us for a meeting, to a meeting at Parks and Rec Department. We met with them since Nancy's retirement and Jill taking over the directorship. Francisco and I have met with Jill and with Rich on a number of times. Last Thursday, I provided to each of you a letter summarizing our position, and as reported by the chair and a member of Parks and Rec, they heard public comment, they heard staff report. We were delighted with their decision to support our recommendation, exclusive right to negotiate, supporting that four to one. If I have time, I may address a couple of points of confusion. But real clearly, we think there are three options to the council to direct Parks and Rec. Option A is renew the lease. Option B is the exclusive right to negotiate for a reasonable period. Option three is the RFP. So we'll review each of those quickly. Alternative A is to renew the lease, and there's been talk of the Resolution 93-127. Ironically, the person who was affected by that is sitting in the front row, John Williams, and he was the operator of the ice cream store, but he can address that. In every, I think there's a bit of confusion here. We've had separate meetings with Mr. Casey, with Parks and Rec, with Mayor Snyder, with council members Rouse and Hart, and in each case, what we said is this. You have Resolution 93-127. It has some great criteria to look at that really apply to someone like Mr. Aguilera going forward. We said those are criteria to consider. We never said in those meetings, nor do we say now, 93-127 is binding on the council, you have to renew the lease. Didn't say it then, we're not saying it now. We do think the criteria, I have time to just cover a couple, are really relevant, particularly to Parks and Rec, looking at this. First criteria is prompt, accurate payment of rent. I think my math is correct. They have made every monthly payment for 32-plus years, I think there are 389 monthly payments. Everyone has been on time. Another big issue with percentage rent, there's been conversation about that. Percentage rent, because it's a percentage of gross sales, is all about the accuracy of the tenant's reporting. If it's not reported accurately, if it's not all reported, the city doesn't get its percentage. This is pretty impressive, that when the city did its audit, as they do of all percentage rent tenants, they looked at a three-year period for three enterprises operated by Mr. Aguilera. Three years total rent from three businesses, approximately $900,000 of aggregate rent paid, underreporting or net underpayment of $803, and that was attributable to Mr. Aguilera getting a late notice on his rent, rent from 11.4 to 12.4 on East Beach Grill. Contributions, the next criteria, contributions to business community, quality of services. All these people in the room can speak to that. I think I'll move on. But the bottom line is, we're not proposing alternative A, just renew the lease. Haven't proposed it before, we're not proposing it now. We think a very fair, reasonable business decision is alternative B, which is exclusive right to negotiate. Very quickly, four points. One is you save money in the process. The Parks and Rec Department are experts in parks and rec and programs. They're quite frankly not experts in operating restaurants or selecting restaurants for the space. Secondly, the ERTN will save a lot of staff time. It will expedite the process, because you're going to have Francisco and his team looking at the facility. They know the facility, they know what works, and you can use his expertise. Also, as stated here earlier, a reasonable period for the ERTN, and I'll just throw out 120 days. I think if it's successful, it would be shorter than that. I think that's a reasonable period. If it's not successful, you can always go to the RFP. If you start with the RFP, none of the advantages that I just reviewed, they will all disappear. They will not exist. Alternative C, I wish this were my line, somebody said, it's clear, RFP, it stands for return, Francisco, please. So we like that interpretation. We think it's a waste of time and effort, because it's time... We think it's a waste of time and effort because it's time and effort that can be avoided. Also, this is really critical, and Mr. Cavazos, I think is his name on the Parks and Rec, he said he makes a living with RFPs. That's what he does. And he spoke very eloquently about the flaws in the RFP process. Even if you pick a high bidder, if we go to alternative C, there's still a high risk of their success. The national statistic is, and some have told you this, 60% of restaurants fail. We all know, it's not very hard to think right now of really high-profile, very big-time operators come to Santa Barbara, big splash, they stumble, they fail, and there's a landlord with no rental income stream for an extended period. There also are a lot of local operators who are really good at location A, and they change pivot, and they go to location B, and then they go to location C, and they totally fail. So, real, sort of in summary, the rationale for Parks and Rec to go to RFP, we think there's a very good answer to each point. One is 18 months of closure. Our answer is, it's a really big burden. Mr. Aguilera is prepared to accept that burden. They've closed before for remodels, and they reopen bigger and better and never miss a beat. Another one is the space is to be different, the size and layout is different. Our short answer is, look what he's done performance-wise in his predecessor, Mr. Williams, in that space with all its challenges. A new space will make the opportunities that much better. The 500,000 in tenant improvements, I spoke with Mr. Casey about this. I didn't introduce this particular consideration, but I consider it a high lob. As I explained to Mr. Casey, Mr. Aguilera has been planning for this. He literally has the money in the bank. He literally has his team ready to go, to plan, to negotiate for the ERTN, and to get started as soon as he has a lease. Hours and menu, he has great capacity. Some folks may be able to speak to that, but he looks forward to extended hours, the safety and the amenities of a space that will permit him to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Dominguez, did you have a question for Mr. Howell? Okay. Mr. White, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you. So, Mr. Howell, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. I construed possibly that in your doc, in your letter, you're saying that the city is obligated to, maybe obligated to negotiate privately with Mr. Aguilera?
No.
Okay.
I have never said that, and I've got notes from many, many meetings.
You're saying it publicly right here?
Yes.
And that's good enough for me. And then the process of should, of a failed negotiation, that is simply, it comes back to council, and council does not accept what is the best deal that you are able to make with staff. Is that, that's our, that's our common understanding of...
I can tell you how I think it would probably work, if you'd like, but, so what I think, if you said directed staff, ERTN, 120 days sooner if you can do it, I think we would immediately roll up our sleeves, as I know they would, and we would talk about key issues, and I think could come to terms or not very quickly. I think we would come to terms. If it didn't work, then it wouldn't work. If it did work, I believe the next step would be a short-term sheet, memorandum of understanding, here are the key terms, council reviews, council approves. We would then go to lease. The lease process documentation would be very fast, but I won't get into that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. John Ketchian, and then Miles Gaetan, and then even Blix. And you have two minutes here at the podium. Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your time. I support Mr. Aguilera's proposal that he be dealt with in terms of exclusively, at least initially. Let's be clear about that. And to make the whole, my time brief, we've heard a great deal of the optimistic points of view of the revenues that Parks and Rec can bring in. We'll hear, I'm sure, more of the downside risks facing us. In viewing the comparisons, I would encourage the council to look not only at the income per square foot, but also income per square foot per hour, to make it more of an apples-to-apples. And if you really wanted to do that accurately, you'd look at what the Brown Pelican brought in, per hour, per square foot, and then you would get the revenue that you might expect currently from the East Beach Grill, and then what you would hope to expect from any new establishment that would go in there. I view the East Beach Grill as a national, well, a city jewel. Outsiders come specifically to see it, and many of us who are here today and many who aren't also patronize it because we just love it and what it stands for, as well as what Francisco has done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miles Gaetan. So, yeah, if you hear your name, if you can come on close, and there's some seating up here so we can keep things moving. So then Evan Blix, and then Gary Villalba will be next. Good afternoon.
Hi. Miles Gaetan, obviously. I just want to say that whether it was after Junior Lifeguards, Reef and Run, or tough Santa Barbara Swim Club beach practice, that East Beach Grill is always welcoming and very, very good after those practices, and they, I don't think any other restaurant can match their quality in welcoming others into their foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Blix.
I'm Evan Blix. I'm a junior at Santa Barbara High. I grew up in Santa Barbara on the mesa, and growing up, going to East Beach every Sunday morning for breakfast is a really cool experience, and I would hate to see it leave and not be there anymore. And it being a part of all the social things going on on the beach is just a great, all its support is just great, and the wonderful atmosphere, it's, I'm really, I'd be bummed to see it leave. Thank you.
Gary Villalba, and is Carrie Zam? Carrie, are you here? You're waiving your two minutes. Great. And then Jane Carnes will be after that, so you have up to four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council and staff. My name's Gary Villalba, and I'm a proud sixth-generation Santa Barbara, and I want to commend you for moving forward on the renovation project for the Cabrillo Pavilion because this is a building that means so much to us, that who have grown up as children on the beach, and who have been there teenagers and also as adults. I'm here specifically to respectfully request that you do grant executive negotiation rights to Francisco. You have an exemplary businessman, an exemplary model, role model, for his family, staff, and for his customers. And I'd like to address the comment made by the dissenting vote earlier today regarding the popularity and the politicizing of this popularity. When you have such an exceptional thing as East Beach Grill that has such a legacy and such a loyal and devoted following, I'm very proud to be part of that popular movement because it's not anything political whatsoever. Our fondness for the East Beach Grill is heart-driven, truly heart-driven, for what Francisco has accomplished as a human being, the role model that he is, for what Mr. Williams established as generating the East Beach Grill in its beginnings. And I would hope that we would just apply some common sense in terms of allowing this timeframe that we have, a wonderful timeframe as presented by staff, that you have this opportunity to do this exclusive right to negotiate. And if that doesn't, if that fails for some whatever reason, then you go forward. And I think it's a wonderful thing whenever you can save the taxpayers' dollars on an RFP. Those of us who are familiar with RFPs and have dealt with them, we know the bureaucracy tends to really move forward and get caught up in the process. So, there's a savings of dollars there, as well as there is a wonderful opportunity to keep something that is so well-established in the community. You have an outstanding steward of that property in Francisco. He has developed such goodwill for this community, widespread. And even when visitors come to Santa Barbara and tourists come to Santa Barbara, and I've had many visitors that I take to the East Beach Grill, the first thing they say when they come back, "When are we going to the grill?" And it's because it's such a family-oriented spot. The food and beverage service is outstanding with affordability, and the staff is absolutely dedicated to customer service, incredibly so. And so, I thank you for this privilege and this time to just speak to the merits of this issue, and I hope that's where the negotiation and your decision will lie into the merit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jane Carnes will be followed by Leo Dominguez.
Hi there. My name is Jane Carnes, and I'm the race director for Reef and Run. I also am involved with many ocean swimming community events at East Beach, Smano Nautica, Santa Barbara Channel Swimming. But I just really want to talk about our relationship with East Beach Grill and Reef and Run. We're, our event has been going on for eight years, and we offer three different ocean swimming events for swimmers from eight to 86 at East Beach for the last eight years, every Thursday night for 12 weeks. And for the first three years of Reef and Run, we had the events, the swimming events, we used the bath house, and then we had our little social gathering afterwards on the beach. And we had about 40 to 50 people every week. After three years, we partnered with East Beach Grill, and we moved our after-gathering to East Beach Grill. And I have a local band every week, and now we have 175 to 200 participants every week for 12 weeks. And I contribute a lot of that to East Beach Grill and how wonderful Francisco and his staff has helped us grow. As everything was said with the speaker beforehand, the staff, Francisco, his dedication to the community, it just really shows in our event, we have grown so much, and I get many, many, many compliments all the time about how amazing Reef and Run is, but it's also East Beach Grill because we have such a great, you know, atmosphere down there. And I just want to say, out of all the things I could say about everybody, how they love the event and East Beach Grill, I had an email just the last couple of weeks from a participant that came from Europe for Reef and Run for a couple of weeks, and he just emailed me and said what a great event it was, but he particularly said how great it was to have the after-party and the atmosphere and the great community with, at East Beach Grill, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo Dominguez, and is Kara here? Yep, there you are. Okay. And then, so you're waiving your two minutes, and then Andrew Duncan will be next, so you have up to four minutes. Good afternoon.
I'm, excuse me. I'm also here to speak in favor of the East Beach Grill and extending, or at least giving them a negotiating, negotiating right. But I should probably start out by saying, I came to Santa Barbara in 1945. I went to grammar school here, went to my junior high school, my college here. I was, I was married here at the mission. I left Santa Barbara to go away for a career, and a few years ago, my wife and I returned here to retire. But during all of that period of time, whenever we came here, came back and forth, and we came back a lot, the first place we would go would be to have a cup of coffee or breakfast down to East Beach Grill. And a big part of that was Mr. Aguilera. He always makes you feel welcome. He always knows your name, and if he doesn't, he fakes it probably, but he's really, he's really great. And now, now we have children and grandchildren, and we bring them there, and they always want to go down there. We have special events there. Recently, I was invited to a 32-aniversary party for him. And the biggest surprise to me is my wife wanted to have her birthday at the East Beach Grill. And we went to, we looked at several restaurants from the old days of Arnoldi's to the current ones of the Boathouse, and we decided to go to the East Beach Grill, and we had a fabulous dinner there with about 50 or 45 people, whatever it was. It's been a very successful place, and after 32 years of being so successful, I don't even understand why we don't just give an extension of his lease. But there are reasons, I guess. We have to go along with those. But I really believe that there should be no real question as to making a successful man be given the opportunity to proceed again with another contract or lease. I can't see how you can improve on success. You can take a drive up State Street, or Milpas Street, or even down Cabrillo Boulevard, and look at all the storefronts and restaurants that are closed. You know, when I was a kid in high school, and even before that, that whole Cabrillo Boulevard changed. I used to work for the Cas, the Casnolas after I got out of the college, going to the, to the, what was the place called, the Chart House. There's so many restaurants along that strip that have been changed within the hotels, and the hotels changed. But one thing, and one thing only, that has remained the same over all those years is the East Beach Grill. So, I really think it should be something that should be given to the man. Let him have the opportunity. If he fails, then you go out for your RFP. And I think there's one other factor, is that Santa Barbara was built as a Spanish city with a Spanish culture and a lot of Spanish people here. And Francisco has been a real image of what hard work and determination will do, and I think we ought to give him a little bit of reward for that. And let him have a chance to fail, and if he doesn't fail, then keep on renewing his lease. Thank you very much.
Andrew Duncan will be followed by Jerry Wynant.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think that the presentation we've seen today was very fair and fairly describes the options and the alternatives involved. I'll grant that it is in fact a new-to-market situation, notwithstanding the reduced risk consideration is, should be the driving factor here. Now, those are, those are my disinterested opinion. My interested opinion is that I attend the East Beach Grill regularly after Reef and Run for six years or more now, after the Santa Barbara Triathlon, at least 10 times, and just spontaneously. The proposal that's under consideration addresses the shared civic virtues that we all believe in, and they're the ones that bring us here today. It's a literal American dream story. Francisco is up from a dishwasher to a successful and respected businessman in the community. The East Beach Grill puts a lot back into the community, satisfied customers, and not incidentally, happy employees. In the interest of simple justice and fair play, I recommend that Mr. Aguilera be given special consideration in the bidding process. Thank you.
Jerry Wynant will be followed by Kara Gamberdella.
My name is Jerry Wynant. Madam Mayor and City Council, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Francisco Aguilera. I was a county health inspector and supervisor for 15 years, and during that period, I witnessed countless failures in restaurants and different food facilities in Santa Barbara City. From that perspective, I strongly urge that you give exclusive negotiation rights to Mr. Aguilera for the restaurant concession at the Cabrillo Pavilion. Francisco has a long and successful record at this historic and unique location. You could not find a more qualified, cooperative, and proven operator, and I'm absolutely confident that he'll continue in that exceptional manner. And I just want to add that, along with everybody else here, friends, family, from out of state, from out of the country, they all cherish their experiences at East Beach Grill. Thank you very much.
Kara Gamberdella will be followed by John Williams.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Kara Gamberdella, 40-year resident of Santa Barbara, and obviously here to speak on behalf of Francisco and the East Beach Grill. I see Francisco many times throughout the year and over many years as I'm on the race committee with Reef and Run, triathlon participants, Smano Nautica board member. I want to speak to you as the board president of the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable. And we've been a nonprofit board for over 50, almost 50 years in Santa Barbara. We hold two events a year at the Cabrillo Pavilion, and Francisco and the East Beach Grill cater that for us. And I cannot tell you enough how easy they are to work with, how efficient and classy his staff is, and they really take care of us as a nonprofit in pricing and making it as economical as we can for our fundraising ventures. And Francisco does that across the board. He gives to the Junior Lifeguards. What he does for Reef and Run has allowed us to really, really grow that event, as you heard from Jane. And I don't think it's political for those of us involved in our community and in our community nonprofits to support those who support the rest of us. And I really, again, encourage, as everyone here has done, that you give Francisco the opportunity for the ex- opportunity for the exclusive right to negotiate. I would be very concerned if someone different were in that bath house, that we wouldn't have the same opportunities in our nonprofit community and our community that Francisco gives us. Thank you.
John Williams will be followed by Muriel Slevin.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm John Williams, founder of the East Beach Grill. When I got the lease in nineteen eighty-four, the previous owner, the year before I took over, did a hundred thousand dollars in sales. I put about two hundred thousand dollars of borrowed money in the first, the very first renovation of that space. So from nineteen twenty-eight until nineteen eighty-four, it had never been touched. So I could tell you stories about what I found, but we tore it right down to the studs, jackhammered the floor, totally redid the restaurant. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, we totally topped out. We just had reached what the maximum that that kitchen could do. So I went, at that time, I went to then acting, or the Parks and Rec head, who was Richard Johns, with an idea to expand our space into unused areas of the building, which we put our heads together and figured it out, and he gave me the space, and we enlarged that kitchen, and I was determined to overbuild that kitchen so that we could grow into it. So last, this last July and August, we had two hundred thousand dollar months. So if you go from a hundred thousand dollars when we started to two months back-to-back at two hundred thousand each, is pretty phenomenal growth. And every single year since we've been there, we've grown the business.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Muriel Slevin will be followed by Glenn Davies.
I'm Muriel Slevin. I represent the two-hundred-and-one walkers who didn't quite make it here yet today. We walk every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at eight a.m. from East Beach Grill out to the end of Stern's Wharf and back, and then we have coffee and breakfast at East Beach Grill. As you can see from the turnout today, the people of Santa Barbara want the city to embrace our currently see Francisco Aguilar, who bootstrapped himself up from nothing, worked impossible hours, educated himself and his children, and has a huge following of local people, and treats his employees as we would all like to be treated. This man deserves to continue as the East Beach Grill concession L C and role model for the Santa Barbara community. So I'd like to conclude with a little analogy that maybe the ladies will understand better than the men in the audience. Madam Mayor and City Council members, just as when you are packing for a trip, do not be seduced into taking the new, unproven, trendy, day-by-night shoes. When you have in your possession your tried-and-true walking shoes that make you happy when you wear them.
Glenn Davies, and is Linda here? Linda Davies? Yeah, there you are. Okay, and then Peter Giordano will be after you. Go ahead. You have up to four minutes.
Not sure I can follow that. Mayor and City Council appreciate very much the opportunity to speak before you. My family and I have been utilizing East Beach since the early seventies. I find these days I end up putting things in historical perspective, not by choice, but by experience. My kids spent, well, my son spent fifteen years in the junior lifeguards, and then as a lifeguard, and my daughter still hasn't forgiven me for the junior lifeguard foggy days. My grandsons are now part of the junior lifeguard program. All this is to say that I've seen the pavilion since the early seventies, and frankly, it was an underutilized space, really a dead spot in a beautiful building in the seventies. The current L C has created the asset you have today. It didn't exist, and you heard a little bit about the investment. I know about investment because I started the Simpson House, which is now a world-renowned inn, and it takes an enormous amount of effort and time and love and, well, frankly, guts to take those kind of risks. And John did that, and Francisco has followed on. And the point I would like to make is that I recognize that the staff is looking for the best financial results for the city, and you're to be honored for that. That's appropriate. But I believe it's up to the City Council to recognize that the asset creation that you have here, and yes, you can get a McDonald's in here that'll pay more, you can get a Burger King, but it wouldn't be the same. Thank you.
Peter Giordano, and I know, Gerd, you're giving your two minutes to them, and then John Klein.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm not going to explain who I am because I think most of you know me. I think I've had correspondence with you, and you know where I'm coming from. There was a comment earlier from a speaker that we need to think like a business, which means you. Well, I would like to ask you to let me think like a business with you and act as a landlord, and take a look at what has taken place, the city of Santa Barbara, as a landlord. We have had a tenant who has made a great facility out of something that is less than desirable. My wife and I go there on a regular basis, and I have to tell you, other than the word "it's a beachfront property," stop and think what I get when I first go there, and I go there with my wife. I get birds christening my head, okay? If we're there early enough, we get to see the homeless sleeping and them being able to be woken up. The bathrooms, I know some of you think they're fine, but I have to tell you, this is a restaurant and a place of business, and I went there with one of you yesterday and used the restrooms, and two of the facilities were broken down and had yellow tape on them, not in use. This is the food facility. We're talking about now cutting back this space that Francisco might have if he was fortunate enough. We're going to get him off to promenade, I guess that's the word. That place is always cold, always cold, even on a hot day, and it could be very warm. There's no air conditioning. We as landlords, and I'm one of you, that provide a place of business, there's very little that is really good. The lighting is terrible, the gas connections are bad, the electricity is bad, and there's a business ethic of morals, okay? We've got to be responsible to our tenant who has made this work. If you want different hours, yes. Let's not confuse it by other properties, like at Laguna Beach, not Laguna Beach, what's her name of the restaurant we keep referring to out there? That's a special location. It's a destination store. You don't even have you and I, because I'm wearing that hat, it's not you. There's not even a sign on Cabrillo Boulevard building that there's a restaurant there. Let's talk about restaurants in the area. You know, I have been around a while. Marmoni has never been successful right across the street, and they have, it's a beachfront property too, and that is not a successful operation. Let's go up the street. The only other food place is where the Santa Barbara Inn, and there's a new beautiful facility there, but there's been at least four different restaurants that weren't successful. This is a destination store. We need to act like a businessman, women, and we need to work with our tenant that has been a good tenant. Can you imagine if any of you had office business or a place of business, and you paid your rent, and you made the business grow, and you grow every year, and all of a sudden, let me go, all of a sudden, the landlord says, "Well, we want to go to bid on this, and we're going to raise your rent." Let's act like businessmen and women, like what the speaker said. Thank you.
Thank you. John Klein will be followed by Frank Goss.
Madam Mayor, the Cabrillo Pavilion was originally intended, as stated in nineteen twenty-seven by some very smart people, quote, "as the first step in a campaign to save the beachlands of Santa Barbara from tawdry exploitation." I moved here in nineteen eighty-three from Montana, around the same time Francisco started work at the beach. The grill quickly became my refuge from what I feared was going to be Los Angeles in disguise. Where else in this town do cultures and generations and economic classes mix so easily, so happily? That family-friendly atmosphere is ingrained in the DNA of the East Beach Grill. It's the DNA of Francisco's family. Excuse me. Graciousness is not easy. It's not a given. It's not bought and sold. It's homegrown. It has roots, and it grows bigger and better, organically, along with the rest of the town. Why not give Francisco the trust that he clearly deserves? Thank you.
Frank Goss will be followed by Barry Leicher, and Daisy is here. Daisy? Yes, you're giving your two minutes. Okay, so you have up to four minutes, Mr. Goss.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for your service. I had no idea. I have had a restaurant in Santa Barbara for twenty-four years. In the twenty-four years that I've had that restaurant, there are a bunch of restaurants around me. The one that's across the street from the Sunken Garden is in its eleventh ownership since I've been in Santa Barbara in twenty-four years. It's been closed four of the twenty-four years during remodels. So when you think through the issue of going out to bid, please keep that in mind. Across the street is Benchmark, really terrific restaurant. Took a year to do the remodel for them. Before them was an outfit called Maggie's. Rumor is that they put about a million dollars in there and lasted about a year, but it took them two years to get their permit. So out of four years, it's been open one. The other one that's around the corner from you is Sama Sama. Some of you have enjoyed their food. And in the twenty-four years, it has been eight different restaurants. And so when you think about a sort of known factor, please give the longevity that he has brought, something special there. Two issues. All of you, I would guess, are a little bit like me. I know that my father was the first of my family to graduate from college. There is a missing Aguilar. His name is Francisco Junior. He was at Cal State San Francisco in his college career, and I like the fact that this man came and started as a dishwasher, and his son is now in college. And then lastly, I find out that the rent is something in excess of twelve percent. The national average, for Randy would be able to add to this, for restaurants is ten percent. For everything you go over ten percent, you take away from the bottom line, which for successful restaurants averages five percent. So you're at twelve percent already, and I would say that you've gotten very good service out of that twelve percent. Please consider an exclusive negotiations with this man and his family, and thank you for the time.
Barry Leicher will be followed by Stephen Ainsley.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Barry Leicher. I was born here almost eighty years ago, and being a fan of East Beach Grill, I formed an affinity with my own family. My dad's dad settled in the United States about the turn of the century. They headed west and settled in Santa Barbara in the early nineteen hundreds. My dad's dad did anything he could to make a living. He had a pushcart in the old country. He was a janitor at Johnson's Cafeteria on State Street. He supported and educated six kids. My dad was the youngest. He went to USC Law School. He came back to Santa Barbara, was the district attorney. All this from an immigrant that couldn't speak English when they first came here. I had the opportunity to be educated here, go to school here, go into business, and in the same way that Francisco and his family, they have three families. He has kids that went to college, and he's got a wonderful partner and his wife. He's got another part of his family, and that's the staff. If you ever had the opportunity to go down there, you'll certainly recognize that. He also has another family. That's everybody in this room that's supporting him. I don't think I need to say a whole lot about that, but I will tell you that I went to the East Beach Grill, as far as I can remember, in nineteen thirty-eight, when I was two years old. And so I encourage you and urge you to keep this jewel as it is. Thank you.
Stephen Ainsley will be followed by Molly Correa Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow, excuse me, members of the council. Unlike these impressive lifers, as some of you know, my company moved me here in ninety-three. I left in two thousand, work took me away, and after I retired in two thousand and eleven, on my choice, I returned here. I love this community, but I have to tell you that the community I saw on my return, in one respect, was different from the one I left. It's not as local. When I go up and down State Street now, it's populated by a lot of national chains, and that's fine, but it's not what I remembered. It's not that eclectic collection of local vendors. It's not an uncommon path for small towns. In fact, having lived in seventeen communities around the United States, I will tell you it's a very common path. But it's not one that attracts visitors. It's not one that tourists embrace. They want unique and different. People from elsewhere just don't seek homogeneity. If you need proof, I ask you to think about Panera Bread and Ruth's Chris Steakhouse. People don't say, "I really want to go to Santa Barbara to go to Panera." It doesn't happen. Which brings me to the East Beach Grill. My desire to have Mr. Aguilar, and we just met this year, I don't know him very well, be accorded the E R T N is both selfish and pragmatic. It's selfish because I love the place. It's pragmatic because I think it's the smart thing to do. The place is authentic. It smacks of Santa Barbara in every respect that you've heard today. Ambiance is not an accident, nor is it good fortune, nor is it the subject of trends. Ambiance is the creation of a smart, savvy entrepreneur, and nothing less than that. Mr. Aguilar has created an authentic space, and his experience and flexibility will do it again. I think you can take that to the bank. An RFP comes with significant risk and modest reward. A decades-long, successful track record, I think, ensures the council that much comfort that there will be a good, he's a good bet. So I thank you very much.
Molly Correa Walker will be followed by Michael Crandell.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I just want to support all the comments that have been made previously in support of Mr. Aguilar and the East Beach Grill and his right, or at least his opportunity for an exclusive right to negotiate, and I would yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Crandell will be followed by Fred Maggiore.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'd like to speak for two people today. First, for myself, I've long admired the culture that Francisco has built at East Beach Grill. As CEO of RightScale, I've learned that the success of any business is as much related to the attitude of the people who make it up as anything else, and the attitude at East Beach Grill is certainly sparkles. For the rest of my comments, I would echo my own sentiments, what you've heard earlier. But secondly, I'd like to take the liberty of also speaking for my father, Larry. And by the way, thank you for remembering him at the adjournment last week. I'm confident that Larry is here with us in spirit today, supporting Francisco and his team. Those of you who knew him know that this is the kind of local, grassroots, personal, unique Santa Barbara experience. unique Santa Barbara experience that he always stood up for. So I really hope that the council can see this as an opportunity for a win-win, to support and enable the business side of this project and also to help preserve a Santa Barbara legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred, you have a number of people waiving your time. Is David Groom here? David? Yep. Okay. Liz Groom? Thank you. And Janice Maggiore? Okay, so you have up to eight minutes. And then you'll be followed by Gary Justice.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, fellow council members, thank you for your time. I will not use my eight minutes. My name is Fred Maggiore. I've lived in Santa Barbara since 1978, what I would say most of my adult livelihood. I've been a member of the Santa Barbara triathlon community since the late 80s. And as such, I will speak to what East Beach Grill and Francisco and his staff and John Williams has meant to the local community of summer's bikers and runners. Since about the early 90s, I've participated at the Santa Barbara Triathlon on a pretty much annual basis. And that was the first time I actually experienced the East Beach Grill in person. Prior to that, I think I spent more time at Carpinteria Estate Beach or maybe Henry's Beach with the locals and my dog. But to go to the grill and to see before, during, and after the race, all the people there and to actually have breakfast there with the folks was kind of an eye-opener. And it wasn't until actually 1994, when I joined the now somewhat infamous 7:00 AM bike ride, when a friend was training for Ironman Hawaii, that I became a regular visitor to the East Beach Grill. And I probably on any given Saturday since then, if I'm in town, I'm probably starting under my ride there and as many times as possible eating breakfast there. If you know triathletes, we have a penchant for long rides and long runs, which also means we tend to have a penchant for eating good food and lots of it. On our bike ride from East Beach, we head out to Carpinteria and we regroup at the intersection of Highway 150 and the Gobindador Canyon, the so-called Goob Loop, at which point we have options there to continue on the ride, say up Highway 150 and around the lake or maybe down south on Bates, we call the climb there, or down the coast. Or the more popular choice, when somebody's asked, what are you going to do for the rest of the ride? It's go back for pancakes. And now, so you can only imagine, so we've got people doing different parts of the ride, longer, shorter. Some people go back on a short ride maybe and they do a run. We call it a brick run. It's part of our triathlon training. So you've got people finishing their training days at all different parts, all different times. So you might have a party of two or three sit down and then two or three more show up and five or six. And the whole time, we're gathering tables, we're gathering chairs and we're kind of rearranging things. And Francisco and the staff and John Williams and the staff, they were more than accommodating to help us, to get our tickets, to try to figure out who just came, who didn't, who's leaving, who needs coffee. We might have 15 to 20 people sitting there on a given day. And this is just, I'm speaking just to our group from Santa Barbara. The Rincon Racing Group also shows up there on a periodic basis, people from San Ynez, other groups from out of town, other training groups like in triathlon season, say May through September, the Santa Barbara Triathlon just occurred. They come down to Santa Barbara to visit and East Beach Grill is the center of their attention also. I will say, back in the day, the grill would change over from breakfast at 11 o'clock to lunch. And so it would be many a time on our bike rides, we'd be in Carpinteria or someone going, oh my gosh, we only have so many minutes to get there, we're not going to have pancakes today. So I have to thank John at that time for making us better athletes for going faster. But we did petition him and saying, hey, any chance we could move this a little, out a little longer so we wouldn't have to be in such a rush? Or we could train longer? And I like to think that maybe some of our comments to him worked because now lunch doesn't start until 11:30. So that's just me. In 1997, the Santa Barbara Triathlon Club was reborn and shortly thereafter adopted the 7:00 AM ride as their de facto local ride. The membership of that club has been since the early 2000s, about 100-plus people a year. So, and that means people actually come and go on a regular basis. And this doesn't even include the people prior to the club being reborn that were members. So I would venture to guess that multiple thousands of people in Santa Barbara have done triathlon here and have therefore been to East Beach Grill. And I know, as people have spoken, that we've gone there with our friends and families afterwards, out-of-town guests. When I became president of the club, I was swimming with John Williams and I looked at the sponsorship deals and I realized that the East Beach Grill was not a sponsor. And I went up to John and says, John, why aren't you a sponsor? He goes, nobody's ever asked me. I said, well, John, do you want to be a sponsor? He goes, absolutely. So for the last 10-plus years, the East Beach Grill has been in partnership with the Santa Barbara Triathlon Club. We hold an annual meeting there. It used to be called the Ironman Send Out Party, which actually this year will be again. So we host a party there for people that are qualified for Ironman Hawaii and we roast and toast them. And Francisco, it's just, if you want to have a party, you agree on the date, you give them a head count and it's a done deal. Handshake and it's a done deal. And everybody has a great time. It's just, it's, obviously, everybody knows it's a great venue. The food is good, the atmosphere is excellent, the waitstaff. If you go down on a Friday night when the party generally is and you show up Saturday morning, guess who's there? The same waitstaff, the same smiling people, the same faces there to greet you. It's just, again, the community and the sense of that we're welcome there and that they have just embraced us. And I just really applaud that. As president of the club, I would get a lot of emails from out-of-town folk saying, where do I go to train at Santa Barbara? We want to come down there, where do I run, where do I ride? So I eventually put together a letter and I would just email it back to them and tell them these things, you know? This is sometimes, even though there was a website, it was just easier to be more personal. And I always said at the bottom, when you're done with your rides or your runs, please visit the East Beach Grill. And I can't tell you how many responses I would get back thanking me for giving them the information, but also, by the way, when you come back to Santa Barbara, we're going to the East Beach Grill. I think you get a sense of what this means to us and the community and as the athletes that we can go there and it's casual. I mean, we're hot, we're sweaty, people are running around and doing these things. And I, you know, I just hope that whoever comes in there, and I do hope that you first deal with, and Parks and Rec deals with Francisco and his group, and that would be, to me, just kind of a no-brainer. As a career, I'm an engineer. So when I'm given a new project, there's two things I do. One is I find the subject matter experts, the smees. And I think we all agree that Francisco and John Williams and his team here are the smees in this area. So talking to him, as has been done, I think is the right way to go. But also, I follow the KISS principle, keep it simple stupid. And the simplest thing the city could do right now would be, is to engage Francisco and his team and immediately work with them and not worry about the RFP because I think it's mis-said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Justice will be followed by David Gonzalez. And then we're going to take a break.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'm Gary Justice. For the last five years, I've eaten breakfast or had coffee three days a week at East Beach Grill and thoroughly enjoyed every outing. The big problem with an RFP is that you cannot judge from a cold piece of paper how the prospective lessee would really perform in the job. With an RFP, you take two huge risks. One is the risk of simple financial failure. And you've seen the numbers, 60% of these restaurants anywhere around fail. Perhaps a more significant risk is you take a wrong image risk. You might get somebody that's financially successful, that person may end up being an ogre, literally. That person may project the wrong image, the image you do not want to project for the city of Santa Barbara. Now, if you were replacing, say, a steel mill with a restaurant and you didn't have anybody with a track record, then the RFP procedure may make sense. But where you've got a proven restaurateur who's done a great job and has a proven track record, the RFP proposal doesn't make sense. And there was something said about, well, do we have enough time? I would just conclude by saying that you've got 33 months until you're planning on opening this new facility. That is plenty of time to have a reasonable negotiating process and then have all the time in the world for an RFP. Thank you.
David Gonzalez.
Thank you. I had a lot of wonderful things to say, but it just seems to be a broken record here today. Madam Mayor, members of the council, you all know me as a longtime servant of the city of Santa Barbara, as a police officer, singing sergeant. I won't be singing a song today, but you can save the groans. We're all singing the praises of Francisco here today. I've long been in Santa Barbara a very long time. My family is one of the original settling families of the city, original command, I'm a descendant of the original comandante of the prestidio. My parents had their wedding reception at the pavilion, so it's very personal for me. I can tell you that I've been involved in the triathlon community for about 20 years and in that time, I've gotten to know Francisco and John Williams prior to him and the service that they provide to all of us, both locals and visitors at the East Beach Grill. I don't think you have anything to lose at this point by granting Francisco the exclusive right to negotiate because I think it will come back and benefit all of us fantastically. So thank you very much. And the last thing I'll say is if you haven't been down there and had the strawberry wheat germ pancakes, do it now. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We have about 15 speakers left. And Trish Davis, you'll be the first one after the break. Thanks.[1245.88] Thanks. Okay. We'll call the meeting back to order. We are going to continue, and Trish Davis, you are next, to be followed by William Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Trish Davis. I've lived in this community almost 50 years, and the first thing I want to do is I want to thank John Williams for making such a great selection of Francisco. Did a good job. He's not even here. I also wanted to say that it was brought up earlier that this has turned into kind of a political football. And what I see, after living in this community for so long, is that the spirit of these people that came out to support this gentleman, I haven't seen anything like that since the Earthling Bookstore. And that was a very successful campaign. I think it's important to realize it's not just having a restaurant, but it's the person that runs that restaurant, that greets you, that welcomes you, that is so incredible in the community and takes care of all of us, and that's what Francisco is like. I think that we need to put the heart back into this whole issue. Yes, the city has to make money. Yes, it'll be a whole new ballgame down there, but I feel like we're losing a lot of that in Santa Barbara, and this is a chance to retain it and to give back to Francisco, who actually, he is the American dream, and isn't that what we all support? So, I urge you to vote in his favor. Thank you very much.
William Davis will be followed by Joe Loito.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name's Bill Davis. I've, much like my wife, although not for all 50 years, but I've lived in Santa Barbara for, since 1963, and worked for the city for 20 years during that time. I just want to reiterate almost everything that's been said. I don't want to waste anyone's time. I think this is an opportunity that we have to reward an individual, to reward the concept of hard work, honesty, integrity, and humility, and simply give this gentleman the opportunity to negotiate something that's pleasant for both sides. Thank you for all of your time and all of your effort.
Thank you. Joe Loito, be followed by Nancy Kaplan.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, I had something written, but I think it's been said more eloquently than I wrote it, so I'm going to fly off the cuff. My name's Joe Coito. I'm the Director of the Santa Barbara Triathlon. I don't need to tell you how he's, Francisco and John Williams have supported the triathlon community over the years. I've been working with them for 22 years, I believe, and the Parks and Recreation Staff, who has always treated me with integrity and have been very accommodating in the things that we've asked for. I only ask that you do what I believe is right and give this man and show this man the loyalty that he has shown you over the number of years that he's been in business with you as a partner. They don't have to support the triathlon. He financially sponsors the triathlon. He doesn't have to. He's going to have a great weekend whether we have our event down there or not. He makes a choice to do that. Nobody's twisting his arm. He does it out of the kindness of his heart. And I think the most important thing is that this man has a long-term view, and that's an example of that. He has the long-term view that supporting the community is more important than saving the few extra dollars that he gives our event. So, I hope you'll take that into consideration, give him the exclusive right to negotiate. Thank you.
Nancy Kaplan, be followed by Jeff Devine.
Hi, Nancy Kaplan, 30-year resident of Santa Barbara. And I know we have a lot of triathletes and bikers that have spoken, but over the years I've been in other sports, tennis, running, outrigger canoeing, where we pulled up for breakfast, soccer, where we played not far from there, went over to East Beach. So, it's not just the few that you've heard of, it's many. And the other thing I want to point out is, my dog gets to eat pancakes with me. Yes.
Jeff Devine will be followed by Marv Bauer.
Hello, my name is Jeff Devine, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to quickly point out, I've been a resident of Santa Barbara for 22 years, and this is only the second time I've ever come to talk in front of City Council. So, I hope that impresses upon you how much I care about East Beach and East Beach Grill. For the last couple decades, I've been going down to East Beach, sometimes once, sometimes twice a week, at lunchtime to take a run and quickly eat something, shower, and get back to work. It's really an incredible facility that we have down there. I agree that the facility needs some work. The facility is broken, but I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that the concept is broken down there. When you go down there, you see people that have gone and taken a run, they're coming out of the ocean from a swim, they've gone on a bike ride, you've got families there with kids running around in the sand, you know, you have business people there for breakfast or lunch, you have the homeless. It is an incredibly diverse facility, and it is a gem. And I agree with Pete that we need to upgrade the facility, and it needs a lot of work, but the restaurant itself is doing its job. The community loves it. We love it, and it's the kind of place where you can easily come back from a run and sit down in a chair in your sweaty running clothes and order a great meal at a reasonable price. And for those of us that have gone down there for many years, we affectionately refer to it as the concrete casino. Not the coral casino, it's the concrete casino for normal folks. And we definitely think that it's doing its job, and we think that after decades of the East Beach Grill and Francisco paying their rent on time and paying their percentage rent, we think that you should give them this 120-days exclusive right to negotiate. There's plenty of time.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
Thank you. Marv Bauer, be followed by Adam White. Mr. Bauer?
Come on up.
You left? Adam? Is Adam here? Did he leave?
Adam left.
Mike Kelly? Robert Fulmer, Robert, come on up, be followed by Sandy Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Bob Fulmer. I'm Professor Emeritus of Business from College of William &amp; Mary, where I taught Leadership and Strategy. And I found this an interesting case study, as indeed was my first morning after becoming a resident of Santa Barbara, when I went to the East Beach Grill for breakfast. Incidentally, I had the best omelet I think I've ever had, and had the chance to meet, well, first of all, a small group of five people who were part of Santa Barbara newcomers who came to walk two or three times a week. That same group has now grown to be over 200 people, who still continue to meet Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and have time to enjoy East Beach Grill. I also met Francisco and heard a little bit about his inspirational story, and I think his status is a exemplary role model. And so, I am supporting the concept that we do this. The conversation today has really been around three themes. We had a great discussion about the renovations. I didn't hear anybody arguing about the renovation. I think Francisco is totally supportive of that as a concept. If he's done what he's done with these facilities, think what he could do with something that's even better. I don't think anyone has challenged the idea of expanding the hours or the scope of the project, but the choice seems to boil down to a chance to negotiate with a partner of 32 years, to build something that you both want from somebody who really understands what's at stake and what it takes to make it successful. Or, instead of this collaborative arrangement, go for a competitive situation, which might generate something a little better, but also might, has a much higher probability of failure than going with the trusted and proven. I'm really grateful that after 32 years of partnership, my wife didn't decide to put out an RFP to see if she couldn't do better. I like to think that she couldn't, but I know she could. I don't think you can do better than going with your partner of 32 years.
Thank you. All right, that one deserves a clap, all right. Sandy Schofield will be followed by Donna Semammer, I think.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you. First, I want to say I appreciate the staff and the work that they've done and their dedication to doing right by the city, both, I think, for the Parks Department and for the citizens. So, I think it's, but in this particular case, I think, you know, a lot of us would beg to differ with their conclusion under this particular set of circumstances. One of the things, a comment was made earlier about this being maybe a political contest, but I see it differently, and I was in commercial real estate, and I see that the people here are a loyal customer base. And I think that having that is one of the key components of a business success. So, I think that that is a very strong business point in favor of continuing to try to work with Francisco. Also, just a comment about, I'm relatively new here. I didn't come here until the '90s, but when we first started coming here part-time, we rented some places in the East Beach area, and we were wandering around, and we discovered the East Beach Grill. Well, I mean, I think immediately we knew we'd found something special. And so, we've been, even though I'm now with part of the East Beach Walkers and continue to go down there for that reason, we started much earlier. Also, I now live up just a few minutes from the boathouse, and I could go there in the morning, but I choose to drive across town because of the heart and the warmth that it's at each Beach Grill. And also, there's a walking group that walks on, at Henry's Beach, too, but they have no connection with the restaurant. They sit at tables to the side, and it's just a totally different atmosphere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, and you're going to have to help me with your last name. And then, there's a bunch of people who said they yield their time, but I'll see if you want to speak.
Thank you, Donna Senauer.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. I am a native Californian, longtime Santa Barbaraan, and our family grew up at the East Beach Grill and with Francisco's wonderful family and staff. You have the gold standard here. Look no further. The business model, he is a success day in and day out. He is the fabric of this community. He is a steward. Please, please, keep this jewel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And then, people just said I yield my time, but not to anyone in particular, so you're welcome to speak if you'd like. You don't have to. Is Angela Foot here? Angela, would you like? Okay. Janet Booth? Win Booth? Susan Case? Would you like to come on up? Come on up. And then, Sandy Roberts. Is Sandy here?
Yeah.
All right. You'll be, would you like to speak?
No, I'm just going to go.
Well, Susan Case, you're it. You're the last speaker. So, off you go.
Okay. Well, everyone will be happy. Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I understand that the RFP is a request for proposals for a restaurant, but the reason we all love the East Beach Grill is because it's not a traditional restaurant. It is unusual, and you can move the furniture. We can come in our bathing suits, we can come in our sweats. If we're going to use the RFP to evaluate proposals for traditional restaurants, we're going to miss what makes us all love this place.
Thank you all, and thank you for your patience. So, it is to the council. Mr. Dominguez, your lights on, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I live in the district. I live in East Beach and enjoying my second rental on East Beach, and like a lot of you, I've had memories on East Beach and at the grill. What I want to point out is people talked about political football or popularity contests, and this may have some of the trappings or elements of that, but beneath that very thin layer, this is all about the substance and meaning in this decision, and it's about the memories and the community that have been built at this location. So, I want to make sure that that's clear, and that's the value of having so many people step forward and sharing with us on council and anyone who's watching this meeting what this proprietor and this enterprise mean to you. So, that's been great. So, thank you all for coming and sharing your personal experiences. Whether it's a political decision is up for you all to decide, but I don't see anyone out there who lives in my district. So, I'm making my decision based on what those folks want, not necessarily everyone in the room, but I think they overlap, because what people in my district want are sustainable businesses that provide service to the community, in this case, providing food and employment opportunities, places for recreation. We've heard a lot about the different events that take place and which are being sponsored by the restaurant, so those are all positive things for me. And we've lost too many institutions, beloved institutions citywide, and in my district, ESOS, Sojourner Arts and Letters, Coffee Cat, and then within my district, Archrock and Muddy Waters. And this is from, obviously, from testimony today, a beloved institution where memories have been created. And I was engaged, I proposed to my wife on East Beach, not at the East Beach Grill, but out in front, on the waterfront. And the morning after the election last November, that's where we went for breakfast. We wanted to go someplace special where we could relax and then just enjoy after not having slept for six months. So, it was a great opportunity just to go to a local place and just feel at peace, and that's what we did. And it could be anyone there who can provide that, but we know that this gentleman and his team, and it's really the team as well as the gentleman who we're voting for here today, who provided that sense of community and that feeling. It's a unique experience in Santa Barbara, and we never know what we're going to get through an RFP. This is not something that a spreadsheet can tell you about the spirit of who's behind an enterprise and what they're going to do with it. So, what I'd like to do is vote for giving them the opportunity to negotiate with the city.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think that, I expect that I'm one of the strongest. I came into this hearing with as much skepticism about exclusive negotiation as anybody up here. I've been on a, really on a strong pitch with staff and with my colleagues to look at our infrastructure and to maximize our finances, our financial health for the city. We're really experiencing some real problems with taking care of the essential elements of our city. And we're fortunate enough here that we rescued a lot of money out of the redevelopment agency for this project. It was just enough through the door that we were able to hang on to a substantial amount of money. We were just on the other side of the door with our new police headquarters, and so we sent the state of California a check for, what was it, $10 to $20 million? $30? For the police headquarters, just for the police headquarters piece? So, this, we, something special was happening to help us rescue the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion. So, as I say, I came into this going, you know, we need to squeeze every dollar we can out of this effort, and this is a very special need for us. And at the same time, and I did have a serious conversation with Marshall Rose about this, one of our friends of the city, who is a property owner and a, someone who was this, one of our friends of the city, who is a property owner and a, someone who was CEO of the downtown organization for so long, but also someone who cares about the city in a, in a way that's both spirit and dollars and cents. And that really did sway me, so that I changed direction, and I know that staff hears me in, in my conversations about our finances, of really pounding the table for maximizing our, our income. But, I think that we have enough of a free shot here with time, and I know that you're hearing the conversation up here today, that this isn't a walk in the park, this is not just a cruise, it really needs to be, we, we need this, this enterprise, this space, to ramp up another chunk. This is a big investment for us, and we need the revenue. Of course, that, hopefully, that would mean revenue, more revenue for, more gross revenue for the, for the entrepreneur. But I, so I have changed direction from where I, where I originally stood on this, of saying we need to go with the RFP, to a place of providing this entrepreneur the shot that he has earned for all these years of steady service. So, I'll be supporting the exclusive negotiation for as short a time, and I've heard Mr. House say 120 days. So, that still gives us enough slack and leeway to, to go to Plan B if we need to go there.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I certainly like to imagine, I could get this kind of outpouring of love, I'm sure he wouldn't get this at a family reunion.[723.73][723.73](Laughter.) Incredible. You know, staff, staff is doing the right thing. We, we, at council and with the city, need to maximize that property, putting a hell of a lot of money into it, it is a jewel, it is, and it's a historical jewel, it's part of our infrastructure. And I think the most businesslike thing to do is, as Mr. Giordano was referring to, is, is, is look at what you've got in hand. One thing I know about the restaurant business is, there's, there's nothing that's known about the restaurant business, and I know that pretty implicitly. You need to get as few variables as possible as you're going forward, committing your dollars, and looking towards the future. Certainly, Francisco's willing to share some risk. The idea that you would go for that many years, matter of fact, how did you get $500,000? That, that, but you have that, and you're willing to commit that, and I think that's amazing for the TIs. We had to put in TIs for our tenants out in the airport. So, the, the fact that we've got a participant, a partner, someone who's willing to sign up 12%, which is a lot of rent, that's a really big chunk of your gross. And you have that kind of commitment, and you have that kind of track record, I mean, I really appreciate everybody that came here and spoke, but that's, I'm not really responding to you, I'm responding to what's the right business decision, and I really believe that's, this is the right business decision. If I'm looking at it going forward, you'll see, you've seen a lot of big names come into town, sign big leases, a lot of splash, and every, every landlord would love to have a national tenant, one of those big names, and some of those big names didn't make it. Some didn't have the local knowledge, some didn't have what Francisco has, which is hard to bank, but it's a whole lot of goodwill and a track record. So, for me, this isn't about the kumbaya moment here, it is about a business decision, it's about working with staff to see if we can maximize the kind of revenue we can create at the East Beach Grill to support this huge investment. And it won't be the old East Beach Grill that, that John Williams jackhammered the floor, you know, and, and did what he had to do to make it what it is, it will be a new facility that Francisco can go forward with and create the new kinds of revenue, the new expanded services, and the new things that I think going forward. So, like, to me, this isn't about emotion, or politics, or even goodwill, this is about a solid business decision, and that's why I'm gonna be supporting the exclusive right to negotiate.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I think that this hearing has been really helpful to me, too, to hear exactly how strongly people feel about this business, and I think that is really important. I couldn't, I have been a strong advocate as well for us maximizing the revenue from this building, and I still am going to be a strong advocate for that. I don't, and I'm becoming more comfortable with the idea that that is not incompatible with giving Mr. Aguilera the exclusive right to negotiate, because he has done something extraordinary with a portion of the time that this facility is in operation, and the people that are here are speaking to that, they're lawyer, they're committed. The city hasn't done a great job of being a landlord and in providing a quality space for you to operate your restaurant, and yet, you've done a remarkable job, and that's, that is impressive, and that's something that has to be looked at really carefully. We are gonna step up, though. We are gonna put $12 million, $13 million into this building, and we, we have to get more revenue from it to make that work. We don't have, we're not gonna have kids who need recreation programs subsidize a building. We have to generate revenue to provide summer youth programs, summer internship programs for young kids, disadvantaged people in this, kids in this community who deserve more recreation opportunities. This is the revenue stream for that. This isn't something else, this isn't for, you know, folks who are doing well, this is the economic engine for the Parks and Recreation Department to provide services to kids. The programs that, that folks have had 20, 30-year history of junior lifeguards, all of these things require subsidy, they do not pay for themselves. And the only way we have revenue is from the business operations that we, that we provide a franchise to. So, so we have to get more revenue from this, this restaurant, but I, but I think you can do that. I mean, you have done it. And, and I think that if our staff, which made the exact right call to propose that we do an RFP in this process, I really want to commend staff for taking that tough call and giving us that recommendation. Appreciate Commissioner Longstreet's one vote on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She's, she's speaking to this issue that is fundamental to whether we can provide these services to the community that people expect us to do. But I've been convinced through this process and hearing what folks are saying, that we can have it both ways. So, to me, you know, this exclusive right to negotiate is really about the terms of what that is. Let's give this, this operator, Mr. Aguilera, a chance to show with a business model that's gonna be performance-based, that's gonna hit the, the metrics that we are gonna expect from a successful operation. And I think that's gonna be the challenge for staff now, the conversation has shifted. Instead of the city attorney's description of, you know, lowest bid, most revenue, sealed envelope negotiation, we're gonna have a negotiation with this operator, but we have expectations, you know, looking out in the marketplace, and the boathouse is probably the best, you know, example of a dramatic transformation of the physical environment of a local restaurant that has an almost identical price point for breakfast. I was surprised by this, because my instinct was that the, the boathouse was significantly more expensive, but for breakfast, pancakes at the boathouse are $9.95, pancakes at the East Beach Grill are $7.95 to $10.95. A ham and cheese omelet at the East Beach Grill is $12.95, a Santa Barbara omelet at the boathouse is $13.95. So, the price point between these two restaurants is pretty darn consistent in the hours when they're operating. The difference is, is that the East Beach Grill closes at 2:00, and the boathouse is open till 9:00. Those additional seven hours of operation are generating more than $500,000 extra dollars of revenue to the county. We need that money, and we need an operation like that, and I'm hopeful that Mr. Aguilera can step up and provide that. And that's what I hope our staff is gonna negotiate with him during this exclusive negotiating period.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everybody who, who came out and stayed all this time. Like Councilmember Wyatt, I came in thinking that the request for proposals would be the way to go, there's been some very persuasive testimony, I'm impressed by the loyal customer base. But I check in with myself, and I think that if the breakwater came open, Mr. Aguilera, you might want to bid on that, or if the Harbor Restaurant space came open, and there was an opportunity to open it up for restaurateurs and all the people that are in the fabulous food business in Santa Barbara, that, that, you know, you and other people would want to bid. So, for me, it's a matter of fairness, I'm persuaded that a competitive process would bring us the best proposal. Imagine the excitement if the, the restaurant industry right now knew, maybe they know now, but I made a phone call, some calls earlier, and really, the industry wasn't aware that this was an open opportunity. So, I think people would, would jump at the chance, and who knows what, what would come in, in term, in terms of a proposal, or many proposals. And that's not to say that yours wouldn't be fabulous and, and you, and you would be, you would be the one chosen. So, a lot of people here, a lot of fans, I, the city is made up of 90,000 residents, however, and that's who I'm responsible for, making a decision that brings in the most revenue for our Parks Department, one of the most, to me, most underfunded departments, one of the, one of the most important to our families, to our children. It looks like it's gonna go your way, I just need to stand my ground and, and, and do what I think is a prudent decision in terms of the public treasury, supporting our Parks Department, and again, I just think that, that competition makes for a better, a better product. And I think what Ms. Longstreet was trying to say earlier, not so much that it was political, but it's been made personal. It's like, if you don't vote for this, you don't like Mr. Aguilera. I can admire you very much, sir, personally, and I do, but I can make a decision that I think is best for the city. So, I'll be voting no if the, if the, someone's making, gonna make a motion to go with an exclusive negotiation, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and, and your very actual genuine testimony. To me, that made quite a difference. We get emails when hot topics come around on a variety of issues, and we received a lot of emails even before the Parks and Rec Commission hearing, as well as before today. And when you see emails, I do look at them, and I do read them, but when you see emails that are the exact same email from a whole lot of people, doesn't have the same kind of effect. I mean, it means something, obviously, someone, you know, agreed to go through it, but the testimony that I heard today transcended that, right? This is not just some kind of move-on type of petition, although those can be very important, this has decades of, of meaning, decades of connection, decades of relationship, and I like to think it's the Santa Barbara way to somehow, you know, reward that when you can. I think, Mr. Ainsley, your point was very well taken, that we, the city doesn't have rent control in commercial prizes, and we don't want to, it's up to the marketplace to decide who gets to go where in terms of leasing and, and who tenants are, but when you can keep that local feel and those connections as much as you can, there's so much more to it than just the bottom line. On top of that, the bottom line is gonna work, and I have, I have to agree with what's been said, but I think Mr. Hart really said it very well, and Mr. White, in that we do need to look at this as a revenue generator for the building and for the department, we're not in the business to run a restaurant, we're in the business to provide services to the community, of which Parks and Recreation is a huge part of that, and that's what makes the city special. And that department in particular needs subsidy in one way or another. And so, when we can find revenue sources within the department to help pay for programs where we don't have to look at solely looking at taxes, or looking at other, other ways where we don't have as much control, I think that's important. The other thing that, that compels me to go in this direction is, there is, there are two other things, there's time, as was, as was mentioned, I think everyone's willing to work in good faith, and it's going to change, the place is going to change, and I know that change is gonna be a bit of a shocker, it's, it's going to look different, and that's gonna be, will be interesting to see how that, how that reaction is. We want it, obviously, to be a positive one, but knowing that the person at the other end of the negotiating table, and moving that together as someone who has 30-plus years of connection with the community, I think that people will see the changes, know that it was a good, good two-way conversation, as opposed to some outside, not knowing who that person is, or from outside area, working with the city, at least to give it a shot. And if it doesn't work, then we'll look at that once more. But I think 120 days is, gives our department plenty of time to go through its process, and I agree, I, I think the staff recommendation was the correct recommendation to make, so, but it was our decision, I think, to make the decision that I think we're, we're gonna end up going today. So, with that, we need a motion, Mr. Dominguez, your, your lights on.
I move that we go with an alternative proposal and give an exclusive right to negotiate to staff with the current enterprise.
For how many days?
For 120 days.
Up to 120 days?
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Dominguez, second by Rouse. Staff, do you need anything else from us at this point before we vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so, that is 5-1, with Mario opposed and one absent, so, thank you very much, I appreciate all your, all your attention.[1535.01][1535.01](Applause.) We do have very little business left, so if you can take your conversations outside the room, and then, I just want to get on to any council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the youth council meeting yesterday.
Sorry, could you please take your, I'm sorry, please take your conversations outside so we can just finish up our meeting, thank you. Okay, Ms. Mario, go ahead.
Thank you, and the youth council is co-sponsoring a meet and greet with our new police chief. We're rescheduling that, we had it scheduled for September 7th, but the chief was on bereavement leave, and now, she's back, so we're trying to get it back on the calendar. And our youth council did vote to do a speak-out, a youth discussion about marijuana, and they'll be making some comments to the city council here about that issue, which we've been grappling with for all year. The Sister Cities organization puts on a 9/11 concert every year to promote peace through music, and it was beautiful this Sunday, so I really congratulate Takoko Wachita, she did a great job with that. Madam Mayor, if you wanted to add something about the C-3H?
Hold, if you can stop, can we close the door or something? I can't hear. All right, we got, that's okay, Sarah, she got it, he has it.
Love Fest continues.
I know.
I think the microphone only picks up my voice, I was just talking over the mess.
No, thank you, please, please go ahead.
Okay, the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, we had a special retreat planning meeting last Thursday, we looked at some budget items, but also, what we confirmed was how important it is to collaborate on a county level on homeless issues. And I'm so glad that we today, during consent calendar, confirmed the contribution that this city makes to that collaborative effort. Glendon had a suicide prevention event last week, Councilmember Dominguez and I were there, very meaningful, I'm so glad I went. And the Chumash community held a solidarity rally to oppose, they joined the Indigenous Opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline in the Dakotas and many other states, actually, it's quite a large pipeline, and I'd just like to congratulate all the Chumash youth that were there. Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the regular meeting of the Downtown Parking Committee, they discussed the upcoming schedule for minimum wage raises and how that's going to affect operations, and there's some concern about the capital reserves, given that we've, they've also taken on a number of, another $400,000 MTD expenditures annually, along with the 350, they already put it in, as well as the plaza commitment, so, a lot of money coming out of the parking committee, so it's gonna be interesting to see what is left over. Went to the Port of Ira to Sister City meeting, and they wanted a few, few things about what was going on with the city, but we ended up in this very, very serious and very exchanged water discussion, I was really trying to channel, channel my best Josh Hagmark, but don't know how that went, but fortunately, there were margaritas, so I think we've got it, got through it okay. And then, my last thing was, I went to Chuck Reed's 9/11 ceremony that he had as kind of the inaugural kickoff for his new ministry, most, many of our public safety people were there, and if nothing else, it's worth going just to hear his wife and his daughter sing, pretty incredible. That's it.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know whether last week, staff brought anything forward on the additional water that was released out of Kachuma, did that, did that get brought to, up last week? Yeah. Well, and while, during, while we were off, I know there was some, some material in the, at least I saw it in The Independent, about a, an additional release of water out of Kachuma, which was really... which was really a spooky additional threat to our water supply. And I hope, I know we'll have a drought update and we can get a more technical, use more technical terms than that, but it does, it takes us yet another notch closer to not being able to pull water out of Kachuma, Kachuma as a conveyance of imported water as it comes in on the state water system. And I look forward to getting, again, some more specific information on that. It was a sleight of hand that was used to do that, and it really was a, not a, it's showing that we're not working as a region in a full collaborative fashion. And that's a wake-up call to us about how we need to manage our water supplies. And so I've been involved in all water all the time here. First of all, another strong heads-up that's come out, came to the Kachuma Conservation Release Board. I don't know whether this came to the rest of council. I'll make sure it does, but the state of California released its draft water rights order for the Kachuma reservoir. If that hasn't gone to all council members, it's a, it's a big nasty document, but it does have a chunk of history in it, which really helps to, helps someone who's sort of introduced to the San Inez River. It gives a, you know, 10 to 20-page history of this, how did we get here on the San Inez River? And the document has some generalities in it, and we will definitely see, no matter what happens, a reduction in what we get out of Kachuma will come out of this water rights order. And we don't know how much yet. There's some generalities in it, and our staff is working on sort of trying to peel back the layers and see, because it's, averages are being thrown out there rather than specificities about low years, high-flow years and low-flow years. We're going to be doing more work on that. We have 45 days to respond to that, so there's going to be a scampering to pull that information together. But as I say, I hope that this document can get circulated to council members and that you have a look at, at least at the first 10, 10 to 15 pages. It gives you a good sense of what the San Inez River is about and the history of all the activities that have gone there. In addition, I, we had a special meeting of the Kachuma, on perhaps a happier note, the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board met this morning. And two more bridges over the Kyoto Creek, which is basically the north, if you have Refugio Road that goes up over the south side of San Inez Range and then goes down into the San Inez Valley. The south side is Refugio Creek, and on the north side is Kyoto Creek. And that is one of the Steelhead Habitat creeks in the San Inez River that's below Kachuma Dam. And one of the Steelhead projects there is to replace these summer crossings with bridges and then allow free flow through that road area, and it gives more habitat to Steelhead. So two more bridges have, it's kind of like the bridge work that we're doing in the South Coast, where there's a lot of grant funding coming in to put in these new bridges. So two more bridges are in the works. They'll go in this fall. So this morning, the funding for that was approved by the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board.
Okay. Thank you. And we do not have a closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.